Good evening, everybody. I now call to order the regular meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Now, please join me in standing, and we'll sing the National Anthem together, and then we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance together. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now is the time for our Moment of Solemn Expression. And today, we have from Redemption Church, a very important person in our community, Pastor Christine Knopf, to help us with this. And please, in these times, could you please lead us in a prayer?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Hello, Council, and hello to all my neighbors. I was thinking earlier today about, why do we do this? What's the point of a moment of solemn expression? And I looked up the definition of the word solemn, which I think leads us to the point. It's serious, sincere, dignified. I think it's a reminder for us to center ourselves on the issues that are waiting for our community. The decisions you have before you, the discussions that we have as a community, impact the way we live together. They impact our environment. Many times, they impact our housing and our livelihoods. And so, I was just reminded of what it is that we're here together to do. And regarding the expression point, that led me to just want to express my gratitude to you for serving our community. Often, when I do this, I try to discern what's the word needed in the moment. And some of you I know, some of you I don't know. Some of us have collaborated together, some of us haven't. But regardless of my relationship to you, I want to express my gratitude to you because you serve us in a time when I think we've lost our way in what it means to serve and disagree civically. And I want to thank you for doing that well in our community. So I just offer a reminder from the scriptures that I follow. In Matthew 25, it says, "Jesus called them together and said, 'You know that the rulers lorded over them, and their high officials exercised authority over them; but not so with you. Instead, whoever wants to become great among you must be your servant, and whoever wants to be first must be your slave, just as I came not to be served, but to serve and to give my life for many.'" So I just invite us, in the remainder of my time, to, all of us together quietly pray for humility and wisdom for our council. God, I thank you for the people who serve our community, not just the council here, but the staff, my neighbors, those who care one for another in many, many ways, those who are represented here in this room, and all the communities and neighborhoods that they represent. And God, I want to bless this council. I bless them for their service. I ask your blessing over them. Ask for your wisdom and your humility as they discern these important issues before our community this evening. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The record will reflect that all council is present except for Councilmember Marv.
Madam City Attorney, do you have a closed session report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We were able to get through some of the closed session items. Direction was given on those. We do have three more items that we will need to take up at the end of the regular session this evening. Should there be any reporting out for that, I can do that after the remainder of the closed session.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Okay, so we have four presentations today. The first one is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month by presenting a proclamation to an organization that has been a true leader in the fight against cancer, the City of Hope. Let's give it up for the City of Hope. Each October, communities across the nation come together and raise awareness about the risks of breast cancer, promote education to those susceptible to the disease, support research, encourage early detection, and advocate for effective treatment. This month gives us a chance, not only to remember those who have lost their lives to this terrible disease, but also to support those still battling breast cancer, and to celebrate the survivors who continue to inspire us with their strength and resilience. Here in Orange County, City of Hope plays an exemplary role in this effort. At the City of Hope, Orange County, Lennar Foundation Cancer Center, the most advanced cancer center in the county, patients receive every aspect of care they need in one place, from prevention through survivorship. Since opening their first Orange County clinic location in 2020, the City of Hope has already cared for more than 40,000 patients. This December, the City of Hope will also open Orange County's only cancer specialty hospital on its Irvine Academic Cancer Campus, expanding access to life-saving treatments, clinical trials, and world-renowned expertise for the 3.2 million people who call Orange County home. Although breast cancer mortality rates have dropped thanks to early detection and improved treatments, breast cancer remains the leading cause of cancer death in women ages 20 to 49, underscoring the importance of awareness and continued innovation in care. So now, I'd like to invite up to the podium Melanie Leach, Imaging Service Manager at the City of Hope, to provide some remarks. And while she's walking up, I'm going to read from the proclamation that we're going to present to Melanie after she's done speaking. And here's, starting with the recitals. Whereas approximately 1 in 8 U.S. women will develop invasive breast cancer during their lifetime, whereas in 2025, approximately 2,800 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in men in the United States with about 510 expected deaths. Whereas during the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we honor the courage, resilience, and strength of breast cancer survivors, offer our heartfelt support and prayers to those currently battling the disease, remember lives lost, and stand with families impacted by this journey. And whereas the City of Hope is a nationally recognized leader in cancer care, conducting groundbreaking clinical trials and providing compassionate, patient-centered treatment right here in Orange County. Now, therefore, on behalf of the great city of Costa Mesa, I, John B. Stevens, the mayor, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Costa Mesa. We encourage all residents to raise awareness, support, education, and early detection efforts, and partner with leaders like the City of Hope in the fight against breast cancer. And with that, Ms. Leach, you have the floor for a few words.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens and the Costa Mesa City Council for inviting me here tonight and for this commendation. We appreciate the City of Costa Mesa recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month and the City of Hope, Orange County's contributions to the community. Breast cancer impacts 1 in 8 women in their lifetimes and 1 in 7 women in Orange County. We are seeing rises in the disease in younger women. Throughout October, breast cancer providers across the national system are wearing pink lab coats. This pink is for a purpose. It's a visible sign of our commitment to keep advancing breast cancer treatment and cures. It's also a call for action for wider access to breast cancer screenings, more research-focused on breast cancer in younger women, and earlier risk assessments. At City of Hope, we only focus on cancer. We are proud to say that our cancer center in Irvine, City of Hope, Orange County, Lennar Cancer Foundation Center is the most advanced in all of Orange County. We offer comprehensive breast cancer prevention and treatment services, including state-of-the-art mammography at our cancer center. We're committed to improving the health of our community for our friends and neighbors. In less than two months, we're opening our, I'm sorry, in less than two months, we're opening our, Orange County's only cancer specialty hospital, bringing more cancer expertise to our community. I'd like to leave you with a few final words. If you are a woman 40 or older, please schedule your mammogram. You can call us at 949-671-4100. Please know that our breast cancer specialists only focus on this disease, and we are here to help you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council, let's go down and take a photo. All right, everyone. So now, we're moving to our second presentation for the Newport Mesa Girls' Softball, 8U Nighthawks. Let's give it up for them. So let's hear about the Nighthawks. And I told the girls I'd tell them a little story, so I'm going to tell them a little story. So, our second presentation tonight highlights the outstanding talent and determination of young athletes right here in our community. This summer, the Newport Mesa Girls' Softball, 8U Nighthawks, All-Stars, competed in the district championship and achieved something historic. They advanced further than ever before, finishing in fourth place and qualifying for the state tournament. Of the 12 players on the 8U All-Star team, six live in Costa Mesa. Yeah. Along with their coach, Coach Jack Boyle. You live in Costa Mesa, great. And these young athletes represent the spirit of teamwork, dedication, and perseverance, and we are incredibly proud of their accomplishments. Okay, so I'm going to call Coach Boyle up to present the certificates to you, but I told you I'd tell you a story. This story is about the happiest moment of my life. Okay? And the happiest moment of my life happened at Thornton Park, and I was in the first-base coaching box, coaching an 8U softball team, girls just like you. And I had girls anywhere from eight to six on my team. As a matter of fact, the six-year-olds on my team, one of them was the pitcher, and the other one was a good player, and both of them eventually played in college. But so, we're at this game, and I was coaching a team called the Cherry Bombs. And it was a rec team, just like you, it's a pretty cool name, out of Fountain Valley. And we're playing against a Santa Ana team. We're half a game up in the standings, and it's toward the end of the year. And we should have beat this team by a lot. And for some reason, we were the home team. It's very important to this story. And somehow, we were down by five runs going into the bottom of the last inning. First girl gets out, second girl gets a triple, but she overruns third base and gets tagged out by the third baseman. So there we were. We had nobody on, two outs, and we're down by five runs. So a couple of girls get on base, and somehow, we scratched out three runs. So now, we're down by two runs, and we get a couple of other girls on base, and a little girl comes up, and her name is Stephanie Tsai. I'll never, I mean, I will never forget this to the day I die, I can tell this story. So she gets up, and Stephanie was a special player. She came out after the draft, she came to play on my team. She started the year, and she just came out with her glove, and it still had a price tag dangling from the bottom of the glove. I says, "Let's cut the price tag off," and she had some of the best hand-eye coordination of any kid I ever coached. I coached softball for 11 years. I coached softball and Little League, and we'll get to Little League later, for a total of 18 years. So she gets up in Thornton Park, two runners on base, two outs, and she hits this ball over the right fielder's head. Now, this was in 2008, I didn't tell you that. The ball is still rolling. She hit it so far. And she comes around, first base, second base, and I'm screaming, and you know the coaches know, I'm waving my arms, I'm saying, "Send her, send her, send her." And I'm losing it, and she scores the last run. We win the game by one, walk-off, three-run, homerun for Stephanie. We were down five runs with nobody on and two outs, and we win the game. I'm still ecstatic. It was the happiest moment of my life. I have got four kids, their birth does not even compare, anywhere near compare. Doesn't compare to this moment. So Stephanie went on to, I don't know if I told you, Stephanie went on to play, and she was a great high school player for Fountain Valley. The two six-year-olds, I think, played in college. One of them played catcher for Harvard University in the Ivy League. So anyway, so I say to Stephanie, I go, "Stephanie, if you play 1,000 games, you'll never hit like that." And I don't think she ever did, but she was a good player. And the parents were beside themselves, it was pandemonium. And I can't even imagine how excited your parents were when you won these games. Oh, my gosh. So, kids, you bring so much joy to your parents, you bring so much joy to your coaches, and I just want to honor you. And I know that some of these parents, you have given them the happiest days of their lives. So with that, Coach, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, Costa Mesa City Council. Not sure I can top that story, but it's nice to know that you know your ball, so that's good. And that's a testament to baseball and softball as a sport, which makes it one of the greatest sports on earth, is the fact that no matter how far you're down, there's no time limit. You can always come back. So you never give up, and good things can happen. And these girls embody that philosophy of never giving up. The most fun girls I've had to coach, I've coached several seasons as well, not quite as many as you, but I'm working on it, and I also have three daughters. But this team was just special from the start. They worked hard, they kept a positive mental attitude, they never gave up, and most importantly, they had fun. Right, girls, do you have fun? Yes. Those tournaments, and the state tournament in Lancaster, were some of the best times I've had as a coach. And I know some of the families have articulated that to me as well, hanging out, not just playing the games, but in between the games, and just bonding as a team and as families. And part of this is, I couldn't have done this, we couldn't have done this without incredible supportive coaches. We have two here, in addition to me, we're missing two others, but incredibly supportive families. Everybody gelled, everybody got together, everybody was positive. And that's not always the case in youth sports. So I want to thank all the families for being so supportive for our girls. So without further ado, I'm so proud to give you girls these certificates. And when I call your name, I'll hand you the certificate, and please stay up here, because we're going to take a picture. Okay? So the first girl is Stella Alderett. Next girl is Dottie Boyle. Evy Cox. Hannah Domasek. Hadley Fabian. Vinnie Foley. Sage Harris. Adrienne Yadi. Maya McCary. Tallulah Messner. Lightning Lizzie Stone. Last but certainly not least, Matty Wang. And then my fellow coaches, Carlos Alderett. And Alyssa Yadi. Thank you.
All right. All right, Council, let's go. All right. We have another great, we have two more presentations regarding Little League. So the next one is for Gavin Brandon. Wait till you read, girls, wait till you read about Gavin. Or listen, I got to read it, I'll read it, you listen. It's a really remarkable story. So our third presentation this evening is a special recognition for a remarkable young man in our community, Gavin Brandon, age 12, from Costa Mesa Little League. There you go. Woo! Gavin recently made our entire community proud by advancing to the semifinals in the T-Mobile Little League Homerun Derby, the National Little League Homerun Derby. Over the summer, he competed in the regional finals in Atlanta, Georgia, during the Major League Baseball All-Star Weekend, where he hit an incredible 24 homeruns, earning him a spot in the top four in the nation, and the honor of representing the West Region in the finals. Can you believe he's from Costa Mesa? Gavin then traveled to Williamsport, Pennsylvania, which is the headquarters of Little League baseball, and he competed on the national stage with his performance broadcast live on ESPN just last Friday. His journey began right here in the great city of Costa Mesa. In June, Gavin won the District 62 Homerun Derby with an impressive 55 homeruns in a single day. Fifty-five homeruns. Gavin. That's unbelievable. Gavin, your dedication, hard work, and sportsmanship have inspired not only your teammates and family, but the entire Costa Mesa community and the Nighthawks. You have shown what it means to dream big and to represent your hometown with pride. At this time, we'd like to invite Gavin's coach to the podium to share a few words about his accomplishments. On behalf of the city of Costa Mesa, it is my honor to recognize you, Gavin, for this outstanding achievement and to celebrate your accomplishments to the proud story of the great Costa Mesa Little League. Congratulations, Gavin. Come on up, coach. Come on up, Gavin. Come on up, coach. So, is Gavin's coach here? Brian, why don't you, yeah, come on up. Come on up, Brian, you come up. And Gavin, Gavin, you come up too with your coach. This is Gavin, right here. Homerun hitter.
You know this is like my favorite thing to do on the planet, and that's talk in front of a bunch of people.
Yeah.
But I will say, while I was technically his coach, I think I was just his biggest fan. I was his first-base coach, and all I did all season was give him a high five after every homerun he hit, and just watch him around the bases. It was probably like my favorite season of all time. I've never seen a kid like this. He's not a kid you have to coach. He says thank you after every practice and every game, and he's just a pleasure to coach. Love you, man.
Thank you.
Gavin, how'd you do it? How do you hit so many homeruns?
I don't know. I started with the bat on the ball and just.
Yeah?
Just trying to rest.
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right, good. So we're all very proud of you, Gavin, and we're going to take a photo with you now, okay? All right. Wait, let's hear it for Gavin. And nobody leave after this, we got a fourth presentation. We got a fourth presentation. All right, so we have one more, we have one more Little League presentation, and it's a very special presentation for the entire Little League. It's a commendation for the outgoing Little League president, Brian Clark. Brian. So here, here, here's a few words about Brian. Brian has dedicated over a decade of volunteer service to Costa Mesa Little League, exemplifying strong morals, ethics, and character, and setting a standard for others to follow. Brian Clark has been an integral part of Costa Mesa Little League since 2016, serving on the Costa Mesa Little League Board for more than six years, and most recently as the president from 2023 to 2025. During his tenure as president, which concluded on October 1st, 2025, Brian led a thriving league with an average annual registration of 735 players across spring and fall seasons, supporting approximately 56 spring teams and over 150 volunteer parents, management, managers, coaches, and board members each year. And they all had an opinion. It doesn't say that. I just know it's true. Under, under his leadership, Costa Mesa Little League celebrated numerous accomplishments, including multiple District 62 All-Star banners in 2024, a District 62 Tournament of Champions banner in 2024, and critical facility enhancements such as new turf installation, John Deere utility vehicles, new scoreboards, dugout shade structures, and snack bar improvements that became a highlight for players and families alike. Beyond these tangible improvements, Brian's most enduring legacy is the strong and vibrant community culture he fostered, one built on teamwork, integrity, and shared commitment to youth sports. Clark served as a role model and mentored many young athletes through his career, inspiring and encouraging them to reach their full potential. The city of Costa Mesa also extends heartfelt gratitude to Brian's wife, Terri, for her constant support, and their son Spencer, who played in Costa Mesa American Little League in Bradley, or sorry, I said Costa Mesa Little League. I, I'm sorry. I used to call it Costa Mesa American Little League, who is entering his final season for their shared dedication and contribution to this meaningful journey. The city of Costa Mesa recognizes Brian's sound leadership, exemplary, exemplary community service, and dedication to faithfully overseeing youth sports in our community. And it goes on now. Therefore, I, John B. Stevens, the mayor of the great city of Costa Mesa, do hereby proclaim this special commendation to Brian Clark in recognition of his service and dedication to the Costa Mesa community and Costa Mesa Little League players, coaches, and families. President Clark, come on up. President. President, yeah, yeah. You, you, you have, you have definitely earned the floor.
Oh, thank you. And like any good baseball family, my wife is in Santa Margarita with my son at baseball practice, and my younger son was taken home by his coach, came here from practice. But just want to say thank you. Thank you for support. Many of you have been here for our opening days. I know Brian is back here, who oversees, help with us, with his wonderful staff, with the support. You know, a couple of things is real bit, a little bit about youth sports. It is important, you know, to our community. It's important that our, we have great opportunities. I'm always prideful. I want to thank some of our board members are here, Rachel Coral, Folk Nguyen, and Mario Washington, and many others who aren't here. It's all volunteer-led. We're all here to really make the best experience for everyone in Costa Mesa, and just want to thank you for the continued support. I think the one thing that I'm most proud of is that many people have a great experience in, in Little League, and it's really become a big community experience. It's one where we've really supported and encourage others to come back. And it's one where kids have not just played for one year, but have played for 10. Both my kids, my kid, my older one, he aged out, but will have been there from age four to 12, and in the same league, made friends with the people I just mentioned. Folk has been my vice president by my side for two years. We have spent a lot of time texting each other, talking about what field equipment we should buy, and obsessing over the weather and whether or not the fields will be open. So happy to pass that on to my new president, Teresa Byrne, and thank you so much for the recognition. Appreciate it and happy to serve. Thank you.
That was the first thing ever. Is there any more? Bye-bye, girls. Bye-bye, everybody. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. All right, everybody, now's the time for public comments to be heard at this time. You can speak about anything on the consent calendar, and you can also speak about anything that's not on the, one of our regular items. So pretty much everything except what's on our public hearing and our old business items today. You get three minutes. You're going to hear a little beep at two minutes. Please wrap it up at that point in time. We'll go to the people within the chambers first, and then we'll get our public commenters on Zoom. If you're speaking English to Spanish translation, you get five minutes. Everybody, please, you can say whatever you want, no problem with the content, just be respectful in the sense that don't interrupt or disrupt anybody who's speaking. And then, you know, you can clap afterwards, but don't disrupt or interrupt anybody who's speaking. So with that, ma'am, you've got the floor.
Hi, my name's Wendy Samo. I'm here about the gym at 140 East 17th Street. So you guys did your little noise, noise sample or whatever, and then you guys now continually let the gym open their door at 7:00 AM. It's not hot outside. There's nothing hot about side. And then they keep it open. They'll shut it whenever they don't have workouts, and then they open it again until 8:30 at night. From 7:00 AM till 8:30 at night, our community has to hear an instructor for three, two, one, any type of music they want. And the city's like, oh, well, they just need to ventilate their gym, you know, put the fan in front of the fire safety door so they can get proper circulation. So I want to know, is it just gyms that you allow not to have proper circulation? Or is there other, you know, branches of businesses out there that aren't required to have proper circulation for the health and welfare of the people at their establishment? You know? Is there any other place in Costa Mesa that lets their main source of business outside of its building constantly, and the city does nothing about it? I know you guys did your little unethical sound sample. I know all about it. You guys can find it online, I'm sure. But it made the gym look golden, didn't it? But the gym isn't golden because I live right across from it, less than 200 feet, yards, whatever, from it, constantly, all day. Could you guys imagine if you guys had to deal with that all day whenever you're home? You just want to sit outside, relax, you know, and you got to hear somebody screaming on a microphone, having a workout? Do, would, would you want any of your family, any of your friends to have to go through this? Because our community has to go through it every day, Sunday through Sunday, every day, every day, never goes away. And I don't understand why it still goes on. It's just beyond me. You know, I mean, I email my council member, I sent you guys evidence, and then the evidence that I sent that you guys played last time I was here was awfully low, but it wasn't so low that somebody from the city called me and was like, hey, when did this happen? What's going on? Because it was very loud, but you guys made it seem like it wasn't that loud. But yeah, you're here for us, right? You're sticking up for us? Thanks.
Much. Yes.
Hi, I'm Dana Levin, and how are you guys today? I have been coming here quite a few times to talk about something that's very near and dear to my heart. It's the TNR program. Seven years ago, I was elected to the Animal Services Committee, and I submitted the TNR program that I thought that we could copy, and it kept going to whoever was going to be in charge, and it kept coming back. We need more information. We need more information. So we submitted something else. We need more information. Seven years later, I figured, well, if you need more information, let me figure out how I can give you the information. And I went online, and I found, just like, if you're aware, we have a coyote website where if you, if you see a coyote, you, you put it in the website so the police department can track it. Well, I found the same type of program for feral animals, feral cats. So I gave it to the, I think, the lieutenant at a meeting. She has all the information of what this website does, how easy it is to use, and meanwhile, nothing has been done. So I just have to say that I'm not sure if you're serious about it, and obviously not, because it's very important. All these kittens now are being sent to Priceless Pets. Nobody wants all these kittens. By the time they get older, no one wants an older cat, they want a kitten. So it's not fair to the kittens. It's not fair to the people that take care of the feral community because they have to go out and buy all the food and keep them alive. And I'm still at a loss as to why we cannot have a program. And I feel that I've given you all the information you have requested on, you wanted numbers, this is a way to track your numbers, and I just wanted you to know that this has been very frustrating, and I'm really sorry that it's happening. Thank you.
Hi, my name is.
Hold on one second. Dana, don't leave. Wait till I can answer your question, but not till it's my turn to speak. Yes.
Hi, my name is Kelly Blakie, and I'm here to talk about TNR for feral cats. I've been a resident of Costa Mesa for 33 years. I attended Costa Mesa High School, and my husband went to Estancia. We both attended OCC. His parents bought their home here in 1968, and he and I have lived in our home here since 2008. I own my own business here in town, and my husband teaches at Newport Mesa Unified School District. All three of our children have had their first jobs here in Costa Mesa, and my son and I have been, have been volunteers at Priceless Pets. As you can see, we have a vested interest in Costa Mesa. I've been involved with attempting to rescue some of the hundreds of stray and feral cats here in our city. I have personally had 28 kittens in my home at one time, raising them to be old enough to be spayed or neutered and get adopted. In addition, all four of my pet cats came to me from our city's streets. I feel so grateful for the small part I've been able to do to decrease the seemingly endless cycle of cats having kittens, but it's not enough. I'm not individually equipped to finance and sustain an ongoing kitten rescue and adoption program indefinitely. The kitten factories just keep making more. We need TNR to be legal in this city so that anyone can ethically participate in helping reduce the excess production of new kittens. This method has a proven track record of curbing the increase in feral cat populations. This should not be prohibited by the city of Costa Mesa. Allowing TNR benefits the whole city. The unchecked increase of feral cats multiplies unsanitary scats in people's yards. They subsist by killing and eating songbirds. They attract and feed coyotes, which in turn multiply and prey on citizens' pets. Sweet feral kittens have to struggle to find food to avoid being eaten by predators, getting hit by cars, or suffering from disease and exposure. And our community members suffer emotionally when they find starving kittens that they can't even turn over to animal control because Priceless Pets is full. Decreasing the feral cat population through TNR will reduce the associated harms. Please help make our city healthier, safer, and more humane. Please make this an agenda item so that we can make progress on legalizing TNR in Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Angela Menharris, and I'm a Costa Mesa resident speaking in support of TNR, trap, neuter, release, as most humane and effective way to manage our community's free-roaming cats. TNR is simple, science-based approach. Cats are humanely trapped, spayed or neutered, vaccinated, and then returned to their outdoor homes. This stops the breeding cycle, reduces nuisance behaviors, and allows population to decline naturally over time. Vaccinations also protect the cats and help prevent the spread of diseases within the community. Across Orange County throughout California, cities embrace TNR and have seen real success. They've lowered shelter intake and euthanasia rates, saved taxpayer dollars, and built strong partnerships between residents, volunteers, and animal services. It's a compassionate solution that reflects who we are as a community, caring, responsible, and forward-thinking. Community cats didn't choose this life. They're here because of human behavior, and it's up to us to respond humanly and responsibly. TNR gives us that path, one that works for both people and animals. I urge the city council to support TNR programs and partnerships so Costa Mesa can continue to be a leader in humane, effective animal care. Thank you for your time and your continued service.
Thank you, Angela. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Mike Ra. By the way, I have a little background. I am an alum of the university, of UCLA, where, yes, and where I created and directed a program for undergraduates at the Institute for Applied, Institute for Pure and Applied Mathematics at UCLA. My graduate degrees are in mathematics from Stanford University, PhD and master's degree. So just a little bit of background. I lived in Irvine, and I've learned a lot about OCPA. Delay the vote to join OCPA until an independent risk study is commissioned, and much more outreach is made to inform Costa Mesa that joining OCPA would opt-in the entire city, and the entire city could pay more for electricity than under SCE Edison. What would it cost an average resident or business if Costa Mesa joins OCPA? OCPA publishes a joint rate mailer, and the CPU, California Public Utilities Commission, website publishes rate comparisons to inform consumers. But OCPA didn't show the dollar numbers in their September 2nd presentation, nor was this data included in the agenda packet. It's a big red warning flag that OCPA chose not to disclose the dollar cost. Currently, an OCPA average monthly electric bill is $195 per month for residents and $260 for businesses. If Costa Mesa joins OCPA and chooses the proposed smart choice service, under the current rates, residents will pay an average of $50 per year more than they would to Edison, and businesses $70 more than to Edison. more than they would to Edison and businesses $70 more than to Edison. Under OCPA's 100% renewable plan, residents would pay $70 per year more and businesses $130 more. OCPA does have a Basic Choice Plan, which they use as a lure, the so-called 3% less on generation that could save $2 or $3 per month. But Basic Choice greenhouse gas emissions are much higher than Edison. That is, greenhouse gas emissions are much higher than Edison. OCPA didn't explain either on September 2. Another big red flag. OCPA is losing money, so when they move to rates based on cost recovery, they will probably likely change more. The phrase "cost recovery" was in OCPA's presentation, but the implications were not explained. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jim, you've got the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I have a presentation you might, I don't know if it's up. You might want to go to the next speaker.
Do we have it? Yeah, it's all right. We can just wait. Do you want to wait, or you want to go to the next speaker, Madam Clerk? Oh, it's up? It's not on our, oh, there it is. I got it. We have it. You're ready to go. Thank you.
Ready when you are.
We're ready.
Excellent. Through the mayor, disappointed that council member Mar isn't here to hear from the constituents. Instead of an ethics policy, maybe we need an attendance policy. I rise tonight in support, in appreciation, for the City Council's bold and bipartisan action, necessary action to terminate the relationship with the former absentee city manager. Absolutely necessary to move forward. And I encourage you to defend the frivolous lawsuit vigorously. Couple things I wanted to bring to your attention to say, we're not done. It's just the beginning. Tony, can you advance that for me? Thanks, buddy. So we spent $3.5 million on TESSA, right? I've been asking anyone who listens, council and staff, please provide me facts and data that I know is available because I see it in other cities. How long does a permit take in Costa Mesa? Do you know how many reports we've seen since we implemented the $3.5 million solution? Not a one. By now, you've figured out what this chart is. Fast is blue. Red is slow. We are the only city that is even a shade of red. It is bright, glowing red. Congratulations. You will not be receiving a participation trophy tonight like we've seen. In fact, we're tied for last in the state. We also just received a letter from the same HCCD that provides this, because the city won't, of a noncompliance on our housing element. We missed the date. Oops. Do you know what that means? We are subject to builders remedy. I'm now getting calls from the community saying, let's go in Costa Mesa. They can't stop us. I just think that's a problem. So during council comments, I am expecting every single council member to look left down the dais and say, city manager, will somebody reach out to Jim Fitzpatrick? He knows the exact reports that we want to see, and we need a solution. Somebody needs to call Mayor Alex down in Laguna. He figured it out. He figured it out. Next one. Here we have City Council caring loudly. We have the city of Newport Beach. Could you advance that, Tony? City of Newport Beach coming over here, cutting checks, throwing their issues over the fence in Costa Mesa, right? Next slide. This is alarming. What you tried to do was convert the Motel 6. You created more calls for service at Mesa Vista than the Problem Motel, the Vagabond Inn. Again, in comments, city manager, bring this back to council. We need a study of this, and we need solutions. You've come after sober living homes because they don't have the right management. They're not creating any issues. Here, the city is. Lastly, we're in a structural budget deficit. This HDL report was late. The people at the bottom, could you advance that, Tony? The people at the bottom of this list, the council, the planning commission, the Five Pack, the Chamber of Commerce, aren't receiving this important information during a structural budget deficit. City manager, could you fix this? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, ma'am, you have the floor.
I'm Vicki Johnson, and I have a slide.
Okay. Just wait, wait. Let's get their slide before you start talking. Let's make sure we have it.
For Vicki Johnson.
Vicki Johnson.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. My name is Vicki Johnson.
Vicki, Vicki, let's get your slide up. Okay, we got it. Vicki, it's okay. Vicki, Vicki, you're ready to go. We have your slide.
Okay, I'm so sorry. I don't hear well.
It's okay.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. I'm Vicki Johnson. I'm here as a resident of Orange County to urge you, do not vote to join the Orange County Power Authority. The power OCPA purchases affects the air we all breathe. The 2024 Power Content Labels were just published October 1. These are California mandated disclosures about greenhouse gas emissions by electricity providers. They are very important disclosures to protect us like the ingredients on labels, like the ingredients labels for food. The greenhouse gas emissions are expressed as CO2 equivalents per megawatt hour. Reducing emissions is the key climate goal. This 2024 data for OCPA is alarming. OCPA's Basic Choice Power has almost twice the emissions of SCE's default power. SCE, 515. OCPA, 942, circled in red. Lower is better. OCPA's 942 is almost twice as dirty as SCE's 515. This is very concerning. For half of 2024, Huntington Beach was on Basic Choice until it exited. Now all of Irvine is on Basic Choice this year. OCPA never gave a warning that Basic Choice Power was so dirty, near the top of the emission scale. 2023 Basic Choice emissions were also higher than SCE. OCPA's Smart Choice has higher emissions than SCE's 50% green rate and SCE's community solar. And OCPA charges a premium for Smart Choice. OCPA will not disclose the power it purchases, even under NDA. OCPA's lack of transparency about power purchases was cited by the County of Orange, including Supervisor Foley, your ex-mayor here at Costa Mesa. And Huntington Beach also cited this as reasons they exited OCPA. OCPA makes no guarantees about lower rates or lower greenhouse gas emissions than SCE. No guarantees. This data shows OCPA isn't able to meet climate goals more affordably than SCE. Do not vote to join OCPA. Now SCE's community solar is a great option. They keep telling you there's no choice. SCE offers a community solar option. It's individual enrollment. It saves 10% off a generation. And you can see here that its emissions is lower than OCPA's offerings for Smart Choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. You have the floor.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Madam Attorney, Madam Manager. My name is Stacy Bushy. You may or may not have seen an email that I sent earlier today. You, yes, that is part of it, one of the attachments. I had the pleasure of attending a webinar this weekend, but I would highly encourage all of you to attend as well. $10. And I included an attachment from that webinar. It's a TNR handbook, and the webinar was persuading municipal officials to go with TNR. And I think you'll find everything in here to answer any questions you have about whether or not a TNR program is right for any city, not just our city. So about seven months ago is when I was alerted to the fact that TNR is not really allowed in Costa Mesa because there's a problem with the release of the animals. So I attended an Animal Services Committee meeting in February. Madam Mayor, or, sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're there. And fortunately, it was determined that same day, along with the city attorney and the police chief and Mayor Stevens, that for the last seven years, the Animal Services Committee was spinning their wheels trying to amend or rewrite Sections 3-1, 3-6, 6, and 3-15. Unfortunately, it turns out that was the wrong ordinance. They should have been looking at 3-54 and/or 3-53. And right there, in black and white, it gives the shelter authority as an agent of the government to release these cats. So that was seven months ago. It's been seven months now. So I want to know, where are we with this? I understand, Mr. Mayor, that you had an agenda report ready to go. And at that meeting, you said that you were in fact not going to present that agenda report because with this new information, you were going to have to edit it and that that decision lied in your hands. You said that it's your decision whether you ask council for more staff time, and until then, the staff is not, the staff time is not authorized. So are we authorizing that? What are we doing? Are you going to bring this to the agenda? Or can another member please help us out here? I mean, it's been so long, seven years, looking at the wrong codes, and now we're waiting to just get authorization to talk about getting time to study it? And then what? How much more time do we have to keep allowing? How much longer does our shelter have to keep paying the price to remove these cats because they can't release them here? So I hope you'll all look through the information I gave you. I mean, really, there's nothing that doesn't cover.
Okay, can you guys hear me? Okay. Good evening, Mayor Stevens and City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Megan. I've been a resident for Costa Mesa for the last 10 years, and I'm here again to speak on the urgent need for a trap, neuter, return, or release program for our city. Because my time is limited, I just want to share one story. Many others are sharing the facts of why it's important, and I fully agree with them, but I just wanted to share a story, one that represents, I believe, what's happening all over Costa Mesa. For the past six months, I have been working in two junkyards where nearly 26 cats have struggled to survive. Without TNR, their lives would have been filled with suffering and much worse. From the colony of 26, two were killed. One is a sweet girl named Princess, friendly, trusting, and loved by the neighbors there. But before we could rescue her, she was killed after being hit by a car. The neighborhood built a small memorial that still stands today because her life mattered, and others have dropped off mementos to show her impact. Another was a six-month-old calico named Callie. Animal Control ruled her death as also being hit by a car, but many of us believe something more sinister happened as a neighbor made it clear he was going to make cats disappear, and that's exactly what began to happen. I personally removed nine of the cats from that colony. Six were newborn kittens I found panting from the heat and under pallets. I bottle-fed them for weeks while they were strong enough to move into a foster home. One cat, Theo, needed two eye surgeries, costing me $1,700 out of my own pocket. I can now happily say that he is thriving and in an adoptive home. Two teenage kittens remain with me. One survived blunt force trauma so severe that her intestines ruptured into her diaphragm, and this was not after being hit by a car. Saving her life cost me $7,000, a debt I am still paying off. This isn't an isolated story. It's one of many playing across Costa Mesa. And while the city continues to do nothing, excuse me. A petition with over 800 signatures was started proving that this community wants a TNR program. The public supports it, the science supports it, but this council does not. Excuse me. Let's see here. To say I'm disappointed doesn't come close. I'm angry, I'm heartbroken, and I'm tired of begging the city council to do the right thing. Costa Mesa is a city that claims to value compassion, but compassion means action, not silence. Every week that passes without a TNR program, more cats die, more kittens are born, and the residents burn out trying to fix the problem. You've ignored the research, you've ignored the community, and you've ignored the suffering. Tonight, I'm asking you, how many more cats need to die before the city council acts? How many more residents have to spend their own money doing the job the city refuses to do? We cannot keep pretending this problem does not exist. I will leave you with this. Because I and others chose not to give up, 24 of our colony cats can no longer reproduce. That is a progress made without your help. Imagine what we could accomplish with it. Thank you.
Yes, you have the floor. Yes.
Sorry. Hi, thank you. My name is Diane Lugo Edmondson. Good afternoon or good evening. So I'm kind of new at this, but I am with that TNR program. I see cats. I live in the community. I work in the community. I shop in the community. I'm all over Costa Mesa. And very often, I do see these little cats just wandering around. Some I've seen with kittens, little by little. Some of these cats I see less of until finally I don't see them. I don't know what's happened to them. Maybe a coyote got to them. When I call the city regarding coyotes, they tell me they can't do anything about it unless I have contained the coyote. How do you do that? So when I've called regarding a cat that I've seen that needs help, I'm told, the shelters are full. I should call another shelter called Priceless Pets. I don't think Priceless Pets can do very much anymore right now. Their hands are full. Everybody is calling them. There's cats everywhere. And they just scuttle and go under brush or under cars when you try to call them out. You can put a can of food out there, but that doesn't help the problem. I understand from the last meeting that I was here that something has been already given to the council, and it's been tabled for years, like five years, and it's still going on. So I'm asking also what everybody has been asking, is what is the city going to do about it? It's not fair to the cats. It's not fair to the community. It's not fair to us. And if I run over a cat that we've already addressed a problem with you, who is responsible for that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of the city council. My name's Erica. I'm speaking tonight to formally request that discussion of legalizing a trap, neuter, return program be added to the next agenda for the city council meeting. I'm not alone in this request. A significant amount of Costa Mesa residents support this initiative, including the 887 individuals who have signed a change.org petition calling for the legalization of TNR in the city. As the city council, you have vested interest in the public health, wildlife preservation, effective animal control, and responsible use of municipal resources in Costa Mesa. Currently, the city's approach of relying solely on trap and remove or euthanasia has proven to be an ineffective and costly method for managing the community cat population. In contrast, a legal TNR program offers humane, sustainable, and fiscally responsible solution. Legalizing this practice would establish collaborative framework involving animal services, local animal advocates, and volunteer residents, and the veterinary providers like Priceless Pets. This framework could lead to greater transparency and a more effective management of the cat population. By adding the discussion about legalization of TNR program to the agenda, you will be taking proactive steps to addressing growing community cat population, reducing long-term costs associated with current animal control methods, improve the quality of life for all Costa Mesa residents by reducing nuisance behaviors associated with unfixed cat populations. I, along with many others, thank you for your time and consideration of this important community issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Becky, you have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Becca Walls. I was on the Animal Service Committee for the first seven years. I was the chair for five of those years and no longer on that committee. But I just want to first of all say, how many people in this room are here for TNR? That's scary. I wish you could get that on TV. It's over half the chambers. Raise your hand. So I do want to do a couple of things here. So we drafted an ordinance in 2020, 2021. Animal Control at the time turned it down. We drafted that ordinance again in February. It was brought to the Animal Service Committee in March. It was brought to city council. There was some interest by city council. I won't point out those folks, but I have sent emails as well as others that I've been blind-cced on, and we have not heard back from council members. We would hope that we would at least get an acknowledgement, even if it's an acknowledgement of, I don't care. That's fine. I'd rather get something than nothing. We did a little change.org, which I kind of thought would be like 100 people. And as of right now, it's 891 people have signed that petition. And per change.org, it looks like 2/3 of that are people within the Costa Mesa area. So it's a pretty significant amount of people who have interest in this. My feeds on all social medias are flooded with support of TNR. I understand the data isn't exactly what the police department would like. It will never be unless we have it legalized. That's the first step. All these sob stories that you're hearing, that people love cats and care about cats, hey, I'm a dog person, but I'm still here because animal lives matter. That being said, those sob stories don't have to happen if we have TNR. Those litters don't have to be born. Those kittens don't have to suffer. These ladies don't have to go out in the middle of the night and save animals if we have TNR. And it's the "R" part that needs to be legalized, returning to the community, returning to where they where they were found. So what I'm asking for you from you guys today is transparency and communication about this. I know that the interim city manager, when you first came on, you did acknowledge TNR, and I'm super grateful for that. Thank you for that. I understand at the last Animal Service Committee meeting, it was said that it'll be on the next agenda and that it's been worked on since I've left the Animal Service Committee. It has not been actively worked on. So since March or April of this year. So we've now given you six months. I have laid low for six months, and we are coming back saying, hey, where are we? What is our update? So my request is a timeline for this to be an agenda item. You can tell me 24 months. That's fine, but give us a timeline. Give us a factual timeline that we can hold you accountable to for what's next. Also, a timeline for a four-hour memo to ask staff to continue to work on this to get more information. I think that that's fair. Staff has spent way more than four hours fighting this, so let's give them time to actually work on this. A timeline for the change of the ordinance. And then also, in the 226 Animal Service Committee meeting, it was determined by the city attorney that Priceless Pets could release cats, but the captain of the police said not without a process, and that process has not been identified. So those are my four requests. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, excuse me, good evening, Mayor and council members. As we have for the last seven years, private citizens continue to take responsibility for reducing the cat population in Costa Mesa. As it stands now, the police department is researching best practices and is scheduled to share their information by the end of the year. Information about TNR best practices has been shared with committee members for the last seven years. Unfortunately, it hasn't made a difference or helped speed up the process. During this time, the cat population has grown exponentially. I don't know how many of you know that unlike dogs, who only go into heat a couple times a year, unspayed cats typically typically go into heat every two to three weeks. 60 days later, they have an average of four kittens. Four months later, all of those kittens become sexually mature, and they can all have a litter of kittens. Unlike the first cities who put TNR programs into practice, you have a group of people with years of experience and many webinar and conference hours continuing our education of TNR best practices. I would encourage those doing the research to take advantage of that knowledge and utilize the resource that is your community members. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor Stevens and City Council. I, my name is Ann Gildersleve. I'm a resident of the city. I'm also a trapper, rescuer, foster, animal advocate, mainly for cats. I wanted to just come and show my support tonight, but I did in February of last of this year, send information over on studies that have been done on TNR. And there aren't a lot of studies, but the studies that are out there all show that the the reduction in cat populations in various communities where they've been studied is is significantly high. At some, in some, it's 50%, some it's 75, and some it's even up to 100% through attrition over time. So I would urge you to consider this. Some information about cats, that a kitten, if it hasn't been socialized by the time it is three months old, something in its brain shuts off, and it will become a feral cat. So there is no place for these feral cats but out in our communities. And then if someone doesn't fix these cats, then as the other, as others have said, you're going to end up with so many cats that it's just overwhelming. And I don't like being out at midnight trying to catch cats, but I do it because I want to try to reduce populations. And this will also eventually reduce costs in the city as well. Priceless Pets is overwhelmed and to the point where they now turn down people. They tell people, leave the cat where you found it. I mean, this is difficult for residents. Residents don't want to leave cats where they found them and not feed them, so they'll go away. So I would urge you to consider putting into place a formal process, like the last speaker just said. Rely on some of your constituents here who have a lot of information. We're happy to share anything we can with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up. Yes.
Well, I wasn't going to speak tonight because I've been losing my voice, but I've also been very depressed lately because of this subject of TNR. I have a rescue. I'm the founder of Forever Heaven. I've been doing this for six years. I've spent my entire inheritance on it. I fight all the time. I'm on Google search. I get calls all day long, people saying they've got litters of kittens, they don't know what to do with, they just showed up in the backyard or on their front steps, and they're asking, and everyone they call says, sorry, we're full. They hang up. I stay on the phone with them. I talk them through what they could possibly do to help, and it's without TNR, it just keeps mounting. And being able to release it, that should be easy, you know? It's better than what we, if they're going to do if we leave them there. So let us return them, but also, we need to start thinking about some sanctuary land. We need to start thinking about some kind of fun that we can put together to help people that bring them in. So it's not, we're not losing our homes trying to help this problem. So if the city helps, we can be proud of that section of our city. I'm looking at leaving. I'm depressed because Costa Mesa hasn't done anything, and you're just dragging your feet. And we need help. We are all ready to help. We've got traps. We can do it. We just need a little extra help from our city, Costa Mesa, so we can be proud. Thank you.
Yes, sir. If you're, if you're going to speak, come on up, so we kind of get a sense of how many people are coming up.
Well, good. Thank you for listening to us. I'm, I don't want to change the name of the city to Cats to Mesa. I want to keep this thing civil. I want to keep it realistic. You know, my wife is sick. I've been here a resident for 43 years, paying taxes and being a good citizen and loving our city, but things are just a little crazy with this, and we need answers now. We need this thing solved now, not studies and studies and, you know, let's get a committee and get a room and talk each other to death. We need to have this thing resolved. My wife is sick. I've spent hundreds of dollars on just flea treatments around my house, in and out, and I, you can't have that stuff inside. It makes you sick. So this is turning into kind of an issue where it's physically harming my family, and who's responsible? It's cats. Okay. But where's the liability lie when someone gets injured when a human being starts getting sick as a result? That's all I need to say. Please consider doing something quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Come on up.
Hi, I'll make it quick. My name's Kendra Cogan, Costa Mesa resident. I know a lot of these guys over here are TNR friends. I've been a foster with Priceless Pets for about five years. I was foster coordinator for three years for mama dogs and puppies, so I am full dog, like Becca is. But kitten season just wipes us out. You think that it's fun to have like a litter of kittens in your house all year long or all through the kitten season, and it's not. It's, as fosters, we are exhausted, and we need help. Other cities, when people bring in litters of kittens that have been found, they will send a TNR team out to where they were found so they can trap the mamas and the papas and get them fixed, so we can stop the cycle. So we just need your help in putting that together. Thank you.
Got it. Wow.
Hi there. My name is Dawn Curtis, and I am also a resident of Costa Mesa and have been involved with TNR now for about a year. And I just wanted to give a example. Just in this last month, I helped someone with a mother cat who was going to have more kittens for the third time. And she had four kittens also at that time that were four or five weeks old each. So if you thought about that, she is probably going to have five to seven more kittens, and then each of her kittens, four kittens, are going to be responsible for four to seven kittens. That's 50 kittens in, from one cat in one home. And so it's small, but I was able to stop that. And a lot of these other gals get out there and take care of other cats, and we're doing the best we can, and we need help, a lot of help. And I was here last year in the spring, and it would seem that not a whole lot has happened since then. And it needs to be done, and that's it. Thank you.
All right. Anybody on Zoom? Anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Mary, please.
Mary, you have the floor. Mary, you have the floor.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Stevens and members of the city council. I want to offer some public comment on consent item number five. I want to make clear that I have no problem with paying an attorney $465 per hour. In fact, I've been practicing for 23 years. I'm licensed in multiple states, and I personally wouldn't do this kind of work for such a low hourly rate. So that is not the issue here. The problem that I have is twofold. First is the law firm of Everett Dory comes in with a low hourly rate, and that obviously will save the city money. But when their tactics and their professionalism or lack thereof, unnecessary fighting, where they're creating fights and they're making issues about everything in the litigation, that drives up costs, not just for parties like myself. I am CEO and general counsel for Insight Psychology and Addiction, who until recently had housing, supportive housing for the mentally disabled in Costa Mesa. But as a respected member of the bar, I have a problem with litigation tactics like those that Everett Dory has been using, not only in my litigation with Insight, but also with other litigation matters. And I won't rehash all of the things that were put in the letter that I provided to the city clerk yesterday. I think you have in your packet. But what I want to do is say that this isn't about $100 more. It's about this litigation as a whole is costing the city millions of dollars. In fact, according to the city's own press release, as of April of 2025, the city has spent over $20 million on the group home litigation. So that's the first problem, is that the city is spending more money because of the tactics of Everett Dory, and there is absolutely no supervision going on. The reason I come to this opinion is the second problem that I have, which is a complete lack of information. And not only that, but I would go so far as to say intentionally misleading. And what I'm talking about is in the fiscal impact portion of the staff report, it says that the fiscal impact is that over the last three years, the city has averaged with Everett Dory's firm $108,000 a year. And the city attorney anticipates that the impact of amending the hourly rate by $100 per hour is going to affect the budget or these costs by 27% or $29,000. That means that basically the city attorney who wrote this and is proposing you to approve this amendment is suggesting that over the last three years, it's been $108,000 a year. That is absolutely not correct. Just in Insights litigation alone, as of October of 2022, six, over six.
Sorry, that's your time.
No further speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, closed public comments. So anyway, we normally go now, we're going to go to committee reports and comments and suggestions, but on TNR, and we're, I'm going to start with Gamaros, but I'm going to take the time to talk about TNR. That way, you guys can either stay for all the comments, or you're free to go, whatever you want. You're always welcome here. So I can't remember the month, but I brought an item for the council to consider, four hours to spend on TNR. We had a lot of good comments from people. We appreciate it. I appreciate the comments tonight. The cat, there was sufficient support through the comments of the council. We don't need to bring back the four hours. That's not going to happen. However, because we're going to move forward with the, with the analysis, I'm going to explain the timeline in a second. However, when we talked to PD and we talked to Priceless Pets and the Animal Services Committee, we decided to prioritize Priceless Pets getting into their new space. Okay? The reason for that is we need them to be up and running and fully in their new space in order to execute on the TNR. But we're not just stopping and waiting for that to happen. Part of the timeline is they're expected to have their soft opening at the beginning of November, so it's less than a month away. We have the, the PD has had work to get them through the approval process, through the planning commission, Priceless Pets, and they did that. And so they're moving forward with their tenant improvements, and they're getting ready to go. The, the, the police department, who's in charge of this effort, has also begun, been working on a draft ordinance, and it will be presented to the Animal Services Committee this month on October 22. The, as I said, the soft opening for Priceless Pets is in November, beginning of November. The expectation is they'll be fully running by the beginning of the year, and by that time, if we work in October, November, and December, we have some meetings coming up, we may be able to get a vote of the city council on the TNR program before the first of the year. So when they open and they're fully, they're fully staffed, they'll be able to hit the ground running. So thank you for coming out. I appreciate it. Thank you for coming out the last time. We heard you. We're listening to you. We're going to continue to listen to you. The delay was because we needed Priceless Pets to get into their new space. They had to go to the planning commission, and we prioritized that. And the, the failing on my part and maybe, you know, others at the city was failing to clearly communicate that, that timeline and the reason for the delay. So for that, I accept accountability, and I'm sorry. But we're moving forward, and if you wish to participate on the 22nd, you can do so at the Animal Services Committee, and I really appreciate you guys being here. Now with that, we're going to go to Councilmember Gamaros for his comments.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do appreciate your comments. So I do have a few things I want to go over, but I too want to talk about how we care about our animals. So at my house, we do truly care about animals, and what I want to say to everyone is I really want to thank you for coming to voice your concerns. Your voice is my voice. Okay? When I hear you speak about something, I'm going to react, especially when it comes to animals. For those of you who don't know, my wife is the manager of Priceless Pets. So at my house, it's always Priceless Pets. Okay? We have no less than five animals in my home at any one given time. We're constantly caring for and helping. If it's not a turtle, it's a rabbit, no snakes, nothing scary at our house, but we're constantly taking in, fostering, transporting, helping, whatever we can do, not just for cats, but for dogs, because our family, my kids, my wife, and myself, we love animals. So we definitely don't want to see a strain on the cat population. On the same note, we also want to see a positive reinforcement and a way that we can go about in, in a professional manner to try and mitigate this problem. I personally cannot vote on whatever takes place as far as moving forward with anything with Priceless Pets because of my position, but I'm definitely here to listen and to help in any way that I can. So for those of you who don't know who I am, I'm Councilmember Lauren Gamaros. My phone number is 949-524-0085. You can call me anytime you want. I'll be glad to do whatever I can and help you out. And if you didn't get the number, go to YouTube and watch it back. The second thing I want to talk about is youth sports. Growing up, my family was involved in youth, youth sports. I played soccer. My cousins played soccer, and I got to see firsthand as a youngster the importance of being involved in a groom, group, team-related activity. It's such a release. It's so great to be recognized. Like we did this evening, we recognized so many great young people, and there was nothing but smiles and elation, not just on their face, but on the parents' face. So I just want to remind everyone, if you have the chance to be involved in youth sports in any way, shape, or form, get involved. Everybody will appreciate it just as much as you will. I have, and I hope. I have, and I hope in the future, that my children will be involved with their children. I do want to take the time to thank Mayor Stevens. He was involved with youth sports. He has a lot of great stories to tell. I know that Councilman Bealy was also involved with youth sports, and I know that countless other council members have also been involved in a great youth sports program. So please, remember, it's really important, and we want to keep that moving in our city. The last thing I want to talk about, and I know I beat on this a long time, I always want to try and take a moment to recognize our emergency personnel services. They're out there kicking their boots every day. If it's not PD, it's fire. And one of the reasons that I always like to take a moment and acknowledge them is because when there's an emergency, that's where you go to. There's not, well, if the police department can't be there, let me go call the, nope, it's the police department. If the fire department can't be there, there's no one else. It's the police department, and it's the fire department. And we have to make sure that we recognize that they are one of the most, if not the most, important thing in our community when there's an emergency. I personally, about four years ago, experienced this firsthand. Four o'clock in the morning, my phone rings. It's my mom. I think I'm having a heart attack. Oh, great. Don't panic. What do you think I did? Running around the house, lights are out, trying to find my keys, telling myself not to panic, trying to remember where my mom's address is, waking my wife up. Needless to say, I hauled butt to her house, which she lives in Costa Mesa, and I live in Costa Mesa. I didn't break any laws. They still beat me to my house, to my mom's house, but when they got there, they acted in such a great degree of professionalism. They looked at her and they said, yep, you're having a heart attack. We're going to get you to Hoag right away. I just want to close by saying, if it wasn't for them, my mom would not be at home recuperating from her open-heart surgery today. So thank you very much. That's all I got.
That's great. Now, and he's from District Two, by the way, and now from District Five, Councilmember Arlis Reynolds.
Thank you. I'll just start by saying, since it was mentioned earlier, Councilmember Mara is not here because she was ill, or she is ill. I was ill last meeting. I think it's a reasonable reason to miss a council meeting, but for those who heard that public comment, I wanted to make that clear. Mayor, thank you for the update on TNR. I would just request, maybe during councilmember comments, sharing updates, since it has been an issue that's sort of bubbled up the council a few times. If you give us some updates, if there's any further delays, that may be helpful for us. I just wanted to share, I guess I'll call it, three events coming up that I'm very excited about and folks may be interested in. This coming Saturday, there is a Climate Action Festival. This is hosted by a collaboration largely run by UC Irvine, but the chair of our Parks and Community Services Commission is the lead on this event. So this coming Saturday at Harbor Christian Church, the event runs 11:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. And then in the evening, I am involved in moderating a panel with two internationally acclaimed authors, Kristenna Cleveland and Victor Villa Senor, and that's a panel discussing the, sort of the nexus of faith environment and community, and there will be a taco bar. So that's this Saturday. Encourage you to attend that event at Harbor Christian Church. In a couple weeks, we have our second-to-last city bike safety rodeo. These have been really fantastic events where, if you go even just as a spectator, you get to watch kids literally learn how to ride a bike. Really fun, a lot of good skills at these events, and we do give out free helmets at these events. So it's our second-to-last one on October 25th, 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. And I've asked city staff to promote these events far and wide. This is the second-to-last event. Our last event is in November. I'm still hearing from families who wish they heard about the event beforehand, so let's please really promote these events publicly. And then third, the Costa Mesa Historical Society is coming up on its 60th anniversary next year. So they've, as part of that, recently launched a membership drive. Their goal is to get, I think, 1,000 new members before, I think it's the end of October, but let's say by the end of the year. It's only $20 to become a member, $15 if you're a senior. And the Historical Society has really done some interesting and fun events about the fascinating, very diverse history of Costa Mesa. So would encourage all council members to become members and would encourage the public to become members. And I'll ask staff to also share information about that drive, since we did combine our committee with the Historical Society in promoting Costa Mesa history. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Now up from District Six, Councilmember Jeff Pettis.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. So just a couple things tonight. It was nice to see the little girls for the sports, for the softball, baseball. It was nice to see. Reminds me of my kids being little. Hey, so real quick, I'm getting, I've been getting for a long time residents. I mentioned this several months back, but I imagine sometimes things take time regarding the plaques, Roger, for the missing plaques that have been stolen at Fairview Park along Placentia there. Don't know, I just, I had forgot about it a little bit until I was reminded by my district folks that they walked by there. So hopefully we can get that going. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. And on every, well, I know that community engagement is a huge thing for me. It always has been, main reason why I ran for office. And I received the, over, and speaking of community engagement, received the Neighborhoods Where We All Belong survey and the email, because I signed up for their email stuff. And the survey is the city of Costa Mesa planning to allow housing to select commercial and industrial areas to comply with the state housing stuff. And when I went to take the survey, there were a few things you could choose. It says, please pick four of your top, and mobility, amenities, outdoor spaces, landscaping, things like that. And I might have picked one or two of them, and I want to submit, and it makes you choose four. So my feeling, I was left with, again, we're back to a foregone conclusion, kind of in search of validation. I would have liked to have had the option to only choose one or two, other than having to be forced to choose two or three that I might not have picked in order to submit the survey. So that, it's concerning to me. And also, I have it, I also received information from a person in a commission that the town, they were told that the town hall will absolutely not be entertained and not happen. So that's a concern for me. It's left with, I'm left with, I might, I was thinking, maybe I'll have my own town hall. I'm like, no, not a good idea. Then I'd be the face of this whole thing. Or maybe, but I'm going to come up with some of my own personal ideas to get community engagement on this thing, because I believe this needs to happen. And I'm left with the question of why would this be happening? Why would we have a scenario with an issue that's such a big deal, like our housing element? And it just so happened that another resident brought up something that was, I'm not going to belabor this report that we got in the mail or sent to the city regarding the HCD notice of violation, but the concerning paragraph for me was, the findings and the conclusions are, the HCD finds that the city has failed to timely adopt a substantially compliant housing element and required rezoning, and is therefore in violation of state law. Under Government Code Section 65585 subdivision I, HCD must give the city a reasonable time, no longer than 30 days, to respond to these findings. Therefore, the city has until September 21, 2025, to provide a written response in this notice before HCD may take any of the actions authorized by Section 65585, including, but not limited to referral to the California Office of the Attorney General. And this letter was August 22. And I know that there's, this goes back a number of years, and there's been some things that have happened in the city, and I don't know, there might very well be action being taken on it now that I don't know of. But that's a concern for me, and I just, I want to think that maybe this was driving some of the lack of willingness to engage the community on these things. So I would like to remind just everybody, this isn't, this might sound like an inflammatory statement, but this time next year, we'll be getting ready to elect a new city council. And how that will look is anybody's guess, but that's, these issues are going to be a major priority, and a year is not very much time to get our focus straight on this thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next up from District One, Councilmember Mike Bealy.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and members of the public. Just a couple of things tonight. Work and family life kind of kept me busy since last session, but I did find time to attend a couple things and then a few comments I wanted to make. But I had the opportunity to attend the Hispanic Prayer Breakfast over at Vanguard University. It was a great event. And actually, personally moving for me, we had the president of Cerritos College, Jose Fierro, and I was pleasantly surprised, and I see my friend Isbell here in the audience. His story was pretty amazing. He, his parents came over here from Colombia. He was born in Wisconsin while his dad was there studying, and then he returned back and was raised outside Bogota. And the reason, that kind of touched me. I met my wife down in Bogota a number of years ago, and she was born and raised in a town, Fusaga Suga, which is right outside Bogota. So anyways, it was a neat, prayerful, and a wonderful community event, and I was glad I could be there with Mayor Stevens and a few other council members. Couple of things I want to touch on. I wanted to thank Parks and Rec Department, Brian Gruner, and kind of pivot on some comments that Councilmember Lauren Gamaros had said. You know, I commented a number of sessions ago about this concept of free play and making some of our fields available for kind of unsupervised free time for kids to get out there and just develop and do things and not be over-coached and over-managed and kind of where we're at today. And I won't belabor that, but I appreciate your moving forward with that. You had some good input for me, and more shall be revealed in the not-too-distant future. So I appreciate you and staff jumping on that. Want to thank Econ and Development Services, Carrie, for taking time to follow up with me on some inquiries I had from a property owner in District One who has some challenges or he's just doing some preliminary research on some potential development. And I was hoping to get him some answers, and I'm learning a lot on zoning issues and Measure K and what we can and can't do and variances, but I appreciate your responsiveness in that regard. I was invited, and actually, Councilmember Pettis and I attended a Working Wardrobes charity event, an amazing charitable organization, and they take a lot of donations. And it started out as kind of a charity that focused on bettering women and helping them get their lives back. And once they get past a certain stage, helping them feel good about themselves again. And it's pivoted into assisting veterans, and it's turned into an amazing organization run by presently by Bonnie Pemush. It was just nice to be out there and doing that. And a shout out to the city manager as well. I had several community issues that popped up, and I appreciate your responsiveness and got me on the phone with a couple people, and we tried to let the community, these guys with real issues, know that we're doing our best to work through them and get them resolved, or at least know that they're being heard and we're working on things. Last thing I want to comment on, I heard Jim get up here tonight and raise several issues. And, you know, it's never easy to hear criticism. I often say, what's neat about being here on council? Or I don't know if neat's the right word. Things are going great. The streets are paved, my trash is being picked up on time. I don't really get off the couch, or the community doesn't get off the couch to come down here and give us all high fives. It's usually when things aren't going right, and it's fine, you know? We need to hear about that. And it's never easy or pleasant to hear criticism, but you know what? It is a necessary part of this job. And if it's constructive criticism, it helps educate us, it helps us focus our efforts, and helps us try to improve things. And I do believe Jim raised several points that are worthy of further diving into. And the issue on the housing element or whatnot, I know there's been some emails involving myself and city manager and Carrie on the econ development front, and that is an issue, obviously. And I heard Councilmember Pettis comment on. So it's clearly a critical issue here in this city, and it needs to be addressed, and we will be addressing it. And I do think we've got a great opportunity right now. Kudos to our newly appointed city manager, and we just recently had Carrie come on board. And, you know, it's a reset time. And let's identify these issues, and let's kind of hit the ground running and do what we can, you know? I did make an inquiry, because as a newer member of this council, I'm really not clear on where we were at. I'm getting a clear understanding of where we are, but let's have a path forward on where we're going on that issue in particular. Tessa, likewise, you know, we're here to provide services for our community, and that's our point of contact. And we want to be responsive to business. We want to be responsive to developers, and we outlaid a lot of money for this state-of-the-art system. And let's figure out what we have to do to make that as effective and as useful and as responsive as possible. And the last issue that was touched on, or not the last, but one of the issues that was touched on, that was a little eye-popping to see the calls for service happening at the vagabond. And I think I'd like to get together with Nate, who's kind of the point man on our homeless issues, Chief LaPointe, who's obviously has to tip of the spear when it comes to interact with people who are struggling in our society. And I am concerned, you know? I was at one point going to talk about a study session, and we, as a city, it seems, we're at the forefront of the homeless shelters and obtaining state and county grants and converting our hotels. And, you know, at some point, we have to ask ourselves, just because we have been awarded grants or not, is it money that we want to take? And are these, do we need additional housing? Or anyways, that's for another discussion another time. But these are all critical issues that need to be looked at and need to be addressed. And I thank the community for raising them. Enough's been said tonight on TNR. I won't double down on that. It sounds like it's moving forward. I haven't been involved in those discussions, but as other council members have said, and the mayor will hold everybody to that, and will make sure that the progress that's being made in that regard is moving forward. So those are my thoughts. Thanks.
So thank you very much, Councilmember. Now from District Four, Mayor Pro Tem, Manuel Chavez.
Thank you, Mayor Stevens. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. As always, thanks to students joining us from Mesa. Happy to have you here. Really have just one comment and one adjournment today. You know, there's a time to explain, and there's a time to listen. And I think today was a great example of a time to listen. We heard not only from residents talking about the trap-to-release program, which I'm happy to hear this progression on, because I know that's something I wanted to see resolved and addressed for our community. But we also had Mr. Fitzpatrick show us data from HCD, showing us what we've heard colloquially a couple times, which is that it is a little hard sometimes in Costa Mesa to move forward with permits. I say this not because I want to come as staff. I know they do a great job. I do this because it's an opportunity for us to really reevaluate and find ways to be more efficient and productive. Any delay we have on building permits is either delays someone has to improve their property, it's either delays we have in bringing in new housing stock that could help us solve the housing crisis we have in California, the one that sees people like myself who are in our 30s not have the opportunity to really attain homeownership because there's no options available for us. That has an effect on the economy, because then young people leave Costa Mesa, and all of a sudden, we have more traffic coming to work in our cities. We have to listen sometimes and see what we can do better. So I really want to encourage and challenge our staff, and I do want to see this come back as a council item. If there's any ways for us to streamline any processes, fix any audit ordinances, I want us to do that. This council, you know, some of us are coming to the end of our terms on this dais, and I want to see us move tangibly towards addressing this issue. Because for me, it really comes down Because for me, it really comes down to one thing. When I talk to folks in my community, the number one thing they mention is the cost of living, primarily when it comes to the cost of renting and the cost of homeownership. These are tied to our inefficiencies. So I don't want to beat a dead horse. I don't want to make it seem like I'm critical in the sense that I think staff does a good job. But let's find ways to be more efficient. And I want to challenge the manager to bring back an ordinances for us to evaluate and see how we can streamline these processes. Because that's the only way we can make things more affordable for residents here in Costa Mesa and attract more businesses to Costa Mesa and make sure that we have a thriving community for everyone in our city. And with that, I want to mention my adjournment. Over the break, it's very unfortunate news. We had a student at Newport Harbor High School pass away in an e-bike accident. This did not occur in Costa Mesa. It occurred in Newport Beach. But I still think it'd be nice for us to adjourn the meeting in honor of Jagger Boyce, who recently passed away. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. Will do. So I'm going to go even further than what, I appreciate all the comments. All the comments were great. Thank you again for everybody who came up and spoke. I'm going to double down on what Councilmember Bealy said is, it's not only don't I mind people coming up and telling us things that they're having trouble with, that they're dissatisfied with at the city. I encourage it and I like it. When I first got on council, a prior council member that was serving, well, a prior council member who was serving with me at the time said the key to this job is to satisfy the agitated without agitating the satisfied, right? So we don't know that you're agitated unless you express yourself. And that's the purpose of this. And it's not just that people are agitated and they express themselves at public comment. But I think I may be the only mayor in Orange County that puts my cellphone number out. And trust me, people use it. And I have some things to comment on specifically because they were raised earlier. I already talked about TNR, and that's moving forward. And again, I appreciate you guys were frustrated. You're agitated. It's like, what are you guys doing? You came and talked to us, and I explained it to you. I'm glad. Thank you. Very grateful that you did that. Regarding HCD, yeah, it's a pickle. And it's a pickle that we've created over time. I was on a telephone call with the people at HCD. There was a number of HCD staff and a number of Costa Mesa staff. And Director Ty told about all the great things we're doing. And in fact, we're doing a lot of great things. We're having pop-ups and engagement. And we're moving forward. And we're doing our zoning and working on FDC, Fairview Developmental Center, and all the great things that her department is doing and she's doing. And they were like, oh, that's all great. Problem is, you should have done it three years ago. And we're really far behind, dangerously far behind. And we, there's just, there's no good reason for it. But we're doing the best we can at this point forward in getting our new city manager, which we made her the city manager just recently at the last meeting. And she's working with the HCD to work on an accelerated schedule. And we will meet that schedule if we do not exceed that schedule. And it is a high priority for us, the highest priority, to get the rezoning done and to satisfy HCD and move forward with a certified and compliant housing element. Anyway, that's, all we can do is what is, all we can do now is what we can do going forward. But I appreciated sitting in that phone call and listening to the candor of HCD. And to use a term that I used earlier, they were agitated. And so it's our responsibility to satisfy them. And we will do it. As to responsiveness, also brought up by Jim Fitzpatrick. True that, you know, a lot of people burn up my line, my cellphone line, saying, things take too long, whether it's a CUP or permit or whatever it is. So the council in April of 2024 had a session where we all commented on what we want to do to improve the city, April of '24. And we all said, better customer service, more speed, more responsiveness. And to be honest, I haven't seen it. So again, people are agitated. We need to satisfy them. It's a high priority. Mesa Vista calls. I was at the opening of Mesa Vista. I voted for money to go into Mesa Vista. I was at the opening with Governor Newsom. And it's not the first time that I've heard that there are a lot of calls for service at Mesa Vista. People are agitated about that. We need to satisfy them. We need to fix it. It's a gift that people come and tell us that. I'm glad that they do. We do a lot of great work, of course, in the homeless area, as Councilmember Bealy pointed out. And we have a town hall on homelessness that's going to happen and are all of our efforts on October 15. And it's at 5:30 at the Norma Herzog Community Center. You're all invited. Among other people that'll speak is the great Nate Robbins, who's going to tell us all about the great work that he does and other members of the staff. I encourage you all to go. It's very important, the work that that team does. And they do a wonderful job. We've housed since 2019 462 people, 462 people from the streets of Costa Mesa into permanent housing. We have a lot to be proud of in the city, but we have a lot to fix. And I can assure you that when, you're not the first person, if you tell me about it, you're not the first person that tells me. I see it. I see everything in the city with my own eyes. And we have room for improvement. And with our new administration, we will improve. With that, we're going to now hear from the new city manager with these high expectations, Cecilia Gallardo-Daly.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First, I'm excited to share and recognize several recent accomplishments. The first recognition is for our Public Works Department Transportation Services team. Under the leadership of Rajah Setharaman, they were honored with the prestigious Outstanding Bike Ways and Trails Award from the American Society of Civil Engineers for their exceptional work on the Adams Avenue and Pine Creek Drive project. There's a photo of the guys accepting the award. This award recognizes the team's commitment to enhancing transportation infrastructure and promoting sustainability options within the community. This might sound familiar because this is the second major award for this project. So congratulations again to Rajah and his entire Public Works team for their continued outstanding work. I'd also like to congratulate our Costa Mesa TV team for winning two first-place awards at the 2025 California Association of Public Information Officials Star Awards Luncheon that was held last week. And there's a picture of our acting Assistant City Manager Almar Reyes and the award-winning team. Over 600 video entries from municipalities and public agencies throughout California and Nevada competed in over 40 categories recognizing excellence in government video programming. The team took home first place for the following categories: social media short form and sports programming edited. CMTV was also nominated for Best Overall Programming and won second and third place honors for their entries in the Ethnic Experience and Diversity Equity and Inclusion categories. So we take great pride when the dedication of these teams is recognized and rewarded. So congratulations. So we have some upcoming events in the city that I'd like to talk about. The first is a fair housing workshop. So this Thursday, October 9, the Fair Housing Foundation will host a fair housing workshop from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM in the community room here at City Hall. During this workshop, you can expect to learn about fair housing laws, tenant and landlord rights, and insights into equal housing rights and responsibilities. Experts from the Fair Housing Foundation will be available to answer your questions. So whether you're a tenant, landlord, or advocate, this workshop is an opportunity to stay informed about fair and equitable housing in our city. The next event the mayor already talked about is our Homeless Solutions Town Hall. It will include presentations by our neighborhood for, or Network for Homeless Solutions manager Nate Robbins, as well as code enforcement and the police department. And lastly, we have the Great Shakeout. The city and Costa Mesa Fire and Rescue, along with the Costa Mesa Police Department, encouraged the community to take part in this year's Great Shakeout Drill on Thursday, October 16 at 10:16 AM. This is an annual opportunity to practice drop, cover, and hold on during an earthquake. During the event of an actual earthquake, people should drop to the ground, cover under a desk or a sturdy surface, and hold on until all shaking stops. In addition to participating in the earthquake drill, we encourage the community to prepare for emergencies by making a plan, building a kit, and being informed. Last month, we announced the availability of the city's Emergency Preparedness Guide to help you become prepared in the event of an emergency. We have these booklets available in the back of the chambers. And the public can also access a digital version of the handbook online at the Office of Emergency Management page on the city's website. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Now for the report by the city attorney, Ms. Hall Barlow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick update on one of our previously pending litigation matters. I try to report to the council on these as they are resolved. This one happened right after I left for vacation. We have successfully had the city dismissed from a lawsuit by Ida Pepper that involved a trip and fall on private property. And it is just one of several that we've had successfully gone city's way in the last just couple of months. So I'm very pleased to report on that. That is all.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we're going to go to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are going to be voted at one time and are considered to be routine. A member of the public has pulled item number five. And Councilmember Gamaros is going to recuse himself from consent calendar item number three because his wife, as stated earlier, works for Priceless Pets. And I'm going to do the same because of a campaign contribution from Ware Disposal, who's on the warrants. So with all that said, everything except for number five, can I get a motion on the consent calendar?
Moose, Consent Calendar?
Okay, that's Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Chavez. And I'll go ahead and second it. Oh, Bealy, Councilmember Bealy's going to second it. Okay, let's call for the question on the balance of the consent calendar. Okay.
You can't push it?
Touch screen error. It says no was lit up, but I had to push yes.
Oh, okay. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay, good. And then we have number five then. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of number five?
Yes, this is Proposed Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for Everett Dory LLP for Legal Services, and it was pulled by a member of the public.
Okay. Well, why don't we just open it up for public comment? And then we'll hear the public comment. And if there's any questions from council of staff, we can address that.
Tony, could you pull up that presentation for me, buddy? Through the mayor. I originally had a presentation, and I saw some very alarming public comments with the transcript of the court. So what I was going to say is, our litigation costs are out of control. Have you seen the warrants and the laundry list of costs? I don't think you're given, being given the right story. Maybe in closed session, you guys can get an audit. And this is what I'm going to call for, both an audit of our litigation and the process. Who oversees what we're doing? Is it the mayor, city manager, city attorney? Who is the belly button of accountability on this? Because I think it's running wild. Next slide, please. So I was going to talk, I am tired of seeing on every closed session this laundry list of money piling up. I'm a taxpayer in this city. I don't see a skill set. Cool, we got a trip and fall, right? Peanuts. Next slide, please. I was going to come and talk about, this is a classic BB&amp;K. They come in, they win it with a low-ball offer. And then they make their money by throwing bodies at the issue, right? They keep the meter running because they don't settle. Who is managing this process, right? This is what I was going to talk about. Next slide, please. This is just from the warrants recently. This meter is running. You're asking for, they're asking you to make a pay increase, okay? In the comments that we heard today, Everett Dory is preparing for trial, which the trial judge will not allow them to move their October date. They have no billable hours? There's two attorneys up there? You guys know it's irresponsible for you to not bill on a regular basis. Are you kidding me? They are preparing for trial and can't submit you? And the pay raise is retroactive? And that's what, that's what this inefficient, incomplete staff report is asking you to do? Next slide, please. So we got to start making this stuff go away, right? You guys got to figure out how to settle and get this stuff off of our books, except for the one with the city manager. It is frivolous and defend it vigorously. Have you read the public comments in the court transcript of how Cy Everett is representing our city? I am offended as a taxpayer. I'm not asking you to vote no on the pay increase. I'm asking you to investigate. And I think you're going to terminate the relationship. That's where we need to be. If you vote for this pay increase, it is irresponsible. There is no oversight. There is no process. This is a woefully inefficient staff report. You're not given all the facts. And based on, I can't believe that an attorney would put all this stuff in public about how they say a representative of our city is behaving and how the trial court judge is admonishing them. This is Costa Mesa. Stick up for our city. You heard loud and clear that the priorities of this city are not being followed by many of these residents. This is a time to send a message. And the message is, you no longer represent the city.
Thank you very much. Any other, any comments on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll close public comment. And then let's do a motion on this one. I'll make it. I move to approve the increase in fees to Everett Dory, seconded by, or seconded by already by Mayor Pro Tem Chavez. Let's call for the question. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. After giving some accolades and shout-outs to Jim Fitzpatrick and saying we welcome criticism, it's also incumbent upon us sometimes to question the criticism. And Jim, unfortunately, just left. Maybe we'll check out YouTube a little bit later. Correct, I'm a 30-year civil litigation trial attorney. Also correct, shortly after being elected, I was invited to take part in a mediation involving the caller who was called in tonight and the insight on litigation. I can't get into specifics there. But what I can comment on is I watched Everett Dory and I watched his team. And they are highly skilled and extremely competent attorneys. And I'm not shocked that an adversary would criticize him. Shocked, I'm telling you, there's gambling going on in this casino. I can tell you that he's a competent attorney. I wasn't here when he was retained. But I have learned that at the time he was retained, there was a public outcry about the fact that the city was being overrun with sober living houses. And the community was adamant, do something. And so the city tried to craft some ordinances and tried to do something to bring this issue under control. And I think in a great deal of foresight, prior council, I think Mayor Stevens spearheaded with some other council members, had the foresight to think, rather than as each one of these sober living houses files separate individual lawsuits against the city, and we go out and we find an independent new law firm to handle each lawsuit and get educated on this newly developing burgeoning industry and the ever-changing statutory changes that are taking place, how about if we find a firm who's willing to dedicate themselves to this issue and give us reasonable rates? And again, I've only had limited engagement with Everett and his firm. But they've accomplished that times 10, in my humble opinion. And then when I looked at his rate increase, believe me, And then when I looked at his rate increase, believe me, I've heard all the attorney jokes, and I know it all out there, and we all get overpaid, and we don't work that hard, and whatever the public perception is. But I can tell you, I'm fairly familiar with what our market rates and this current, based on his skill, his experience, and what I've seen with my own two eyes, and I'm a 30-year trial attorney. He's below market rate even with this raise, so I have no problem on that. But I'm actually glad that this item was pulled because it gives me an opportunity to comment on something that I think this city and all cities right now are dealing with and we have to keep an eye on. It's been in the news quite a bit lately, and I'll just touch on one thing. City of L.A., in 2022, 91 million in settlements. The trip and fall, the person who stubs their toe on a crack, the person who gets arrested and they sue our law enforcement because their civil rights have been impacted. I'm sure fire department goes to assist somebody, and it wasn't handled perfectly in their eyes, and they find a plaintiff's attorney and they file a lawsuit. 91 million in 2022. But wait, 2024, 289 million. 2025, they're on pace, 320 million. It's become a cottage industry, and I appreciate, again, that we've got members of the community who are looking at the litigation fees and the attorney fees and the costs and the, it's plaguing cities, and those funds come directly out of your general fund. Every time we settle one of these exorbitant cases, it's another CIP project that we have to reconsider. And I know we're just city council, but I think, I heard Mayor Stevens comment, we're going to talk to Congress, and I tell you, in the litigation world, and I'm not going to be a big friend of the plaintiff's bar by making this comment, but medical malpractice suits were so overrunning the medical profession that they created a whole statutory scheme called MICRA, which limits the amount of recovery that any plaintiff can bring in a medical malpractice. I think our Congress, our state Capitol, has to start thinking along those lines because it's become a cottage industry that anything happens in some city, plaintiff finds an attorney, and they sue, and there's no cap. So anyways, I'm glad they pulled that, and I appreciate, and our constituents are right to be concerned on the exorbitant legal fees and when we're going to propose a raise for some attorneys. But it's a real issue, and it's a lot bigger issue and a much more complicated issue. And yes, I'm a 30-year trial attorney, so I can comment on this issue. So I just wanted to say that.
Councilmember, I'm glad you did. Now I have to talk. So, yeah, he's right about, he's done his homework, he's right about almost everything he said. I just want to take, and right about everything he said. I just want to take it to the next level. I mean, the rates here are way below market. Just to put it in perspective, it's less than half of my billing rate, and I'm not, I have no shortage of self-esteem, but I can tell you that I am not twice the lawyer of Cy Everett, okay? And so he's, it's a very, very fair rate. I mean, my goodness, we did put him in here for the sole purpose, as Councilmember Bealy said, of getting a firm that would build a team that would have a subject matter expertise in this area, because we didn't have that, and we spent $8 million on the Yellowstone case with Jennifer Keller. That's the lion's share of our $20 million that we spent on this endeavor for over 10 years. And so Cy did that. He put together a team. He won the Ohio House case. He won the Ohio House appeal with MC Sungaila. And as a result of that, in 13 states in the United States of America, that is the law regarding, and our ordinance has held up in federal court. So thank you to their work. Are they perfect? No. No lawyer is perfect. Have they filed motions and lost? 100%. And also, do you, even a lawyer who has practiced law for 36 years, do you want your mayor to micromanage your outside counsel? You do not want that, and I will not do it because that's my profession, and I won't do it at any, at zero rates, much less Cy Everett's rates. So that's the reason for the motion. It's an easy decision for me. Let's call for the question.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask one clarifying question? Does that include the retroactive request to September the 2nd?
Yes.
Thank you.
Call for the question.
Motion carries six zero.
Thanks. Okay. We will be able to get through the rest of the calendar quickly, but I need to take a short break. So let's come back in at 8:30.
He's paying attention. I'm just kidding. All right, we're back on the record. Okay, so we're at, I think, public hearing. Excuse me, councilmembers. We're, I think, at item number, public hearing number one, right? Can you please read the title?
Thank you. This is the final environmental impact report, general plan amendment, rezoned, specific plan amendment, master plan, vesting tentative, parcel map, density bonus, and development agreement for Hive Live, a three-phase, 1,050-unit residential development with 3,690 square feet retail component at 3333 Susan Street. Honorable Mayor and City Council, the applicant has requested that the item be continued to a date uncertain at this time, and that is staff's recommendation for tonight. Additionally, Director Tai is available to answer any questions you have, and this concludes the report.
Yes, yes, the Hive is not going to happen. So let's, why don't we just, do we have to do it, do we have to take action?
Yes.
Okay.
And a public comment also, please.
Okay, open it up for public comment. No, yes, go ahead. Iggy, you have the floor. Oh, sorry, I had to get your mic hot. There you go.
Thanks, councilmembers. Nice seeing you guys. I really wasn't planning, but on speaking, but I have nothing against any development. The problem with it, the infrastructure truly can't handle it. So we'll work through this, and I'm sure you guys are going to make all the right decisions. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment. Yeah, you wish to be, you want to be heard, councilmember? Yes, of course.
Yeah, just a quick question on the staff recommendation. So the recommendation is continue to a date uncertain. Is there a deadline on that? Like, at what point does an application expire if action hasn't been taken? If at all?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Reynolds. So long as we're in constant contact with the applicant and they have not submitted any sort of withdrawal, we will keep the application active until such time they tell us they are ready to proceed. And then we'll start the public hearing notification process over, and that includes publication to the newspaper as well as mailing to the surrounding radius as required. And so we just start the public hearing process as a new, and then conduct the public hearing at that point.
Okay, thank you.
So Councilmember Reynolds made the motion to continue to indefinite time. I seconded it. Do you have any comments, councilmember?
No.
Okay, I just have some comments. I'm 99% sure that this is fine to say. So this was a great, very promising project. Thank you very much for Legacy, Invesco, Tim O'Brien, Pam Sopetto, the whole team that worked so hard on this. It was, we spent a lot of time, and also thank you very much to the staff for working so hard on it. It's just sometimes, you know, everybody has property rights, and we respect those property rights. The property was sold by Invesco to a company called Drawbridge. Drawbridge in turn entered into a 15-year lease with Androl. Androl, of course, is a great corporate citizen of the city of Costa Mesa. It's wonderful that they're expanding. It's disappointing that we can't go forward with the beautiful housing project, but I'm very pleased by Androl, and they're an excellent employer, and they, we're glad to have them in the community, and welcome to Costa Mesa, Drawbridge. So with that, let's call for the question.
Motion carries six zero.
Okay. Public hearing, item number two, please read the title.
Appeal of Planning Application 23-14 and Tentative Parcel Map 2023-117 for a Residential Small Lot Subdivision to Create Two Parcels, Each Containing a New Two-Story Detached Single Family Resident and An Attached Two-Car Garage at 2308 Santa Anna Avenue. And Staff Presentation by Ms. Curly, Assistant Planner.
Ms. Curly, welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I am Assistant Planner Caitlin Curly. This evening, I will be presenting an appeal of a design review and tentative parcel map for a property located at 2308 Santa Anna Avenue. This project was heard by the Planning Commission on August 11th, 2025. It was approved with a seven-to-zero vote, with an added condition of approval to screen the south side of parcel two and replace palm trees on the property. The Commission also directed staff to further enforce second-floor privacy standards along the southern building facades. An appeal was filed on August 18th. The project site is located at the intersection of Santa Anna Avenue and 23rd Street. The subject parcel is rectangular, and it is currently developed with a single-family home and detached garage. The project includes a design review for a small-lot residential development consisting of two two-story, single-family dwelling units and a tentative parcel map to subdivide the lot into two parcels with one of the residential units on each lot. Site improvements, including new hardscape and landscaping, are also proposed, and the existing single-family residential unit and garage will be demolished. The project includes two single-family homes, each with three bedrooms and a two-car garage, with two open parking spaces. The project complies with all development standards. In response to Commissioner comments and the appeal, staff have met with the applicant to discuss modifications to the project design to mitigate privacy impacts and comply with the conditions of approval. The applicant has provided an updated landscaping plan in order to comply with the conditions. The applicant has revised the planting plan to remove the palm trees and include additional trees to screen the proposed second-story windows and structure along the southern property line. The revised plans show yew pines to be planted along the south side of the property to provide the additional screening. The Planning Commission conditionally approved the project on August 11th with two of the conditions related to privacy impacts on neighboring properties. Condition of Approval Number Three is a standard condition commonly applied to two-story projects and requires the application of mitigation measures to two-story construction to protect neighbors' privacy. The Commission provided direction for the final project design to be modified to meet these conditions. Condition of Approval 14 was added by the Commission and required palm trees at the rear of the property be replaced by a different type of tree, and for trees to be placed along the south side of parcel two to screen the project from neighboring residences. As shown in the previous slide, the applicant does propose a modified landscape plan to meet these conditions. The City Council has the authority to modify these conditions as it deems appropriate. The appellant had four main concerns regarding this project: limiting, limited noticing for the project, a lack of sufficient evidence regarding the Commission's decision, the presence of adverse impacts on neighboring properties, and vague conditions of approval. The project was noticed as required by the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, which requires public noticing no less than 10 days prior to the hearing in the form of mailers, postings on the project site, and a newspaper publication. The noticing dates for this project comply with that section of the code. The Brown Act also requires an agenda to be posted at least 72 hours prior to a regular meeting. The meeting agenda, project agenda report, and corresponding attachments were posted on the city's website four days prior to the meeting. The Planning Commission was presented with all relevant materials related to the project during the hearing, reviewed the materials provided, and made an informed and deliberate decision to approve the project, subject to the revised conditions of approval. Public correspondence was received prior to the hearing and was provided to the Commission. Additionally, public comments were made during the hearing. The Planning Commission reviewed the project for potential adverse impacts and determined that further steps should be taken to protect the privacy of neighboring backyards. The Commission emphasized condition of approval number three and added condition of approval number 14. The applicant has provided an updating, an updated landscaping plan to meet these conditions. All conditions of approval provided as part of staff's recommendation and approved by the Planning Commission are standard conditions of approval utilized for similar projects. These conditions of approval have been applied and enforced in the past without substantial issues on the part of city or applicants. The Planning Commission adopted condition number 14 for additional landscaping to provide screening to neighboring properties. Pursuant to Title 13, Section 13209D of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, three types of public notification have been completed for this City Council hearing. This is a hearing, this appeal hearing is a de novo review. City Council may exercise its independent judgment and discretion in making a decision on the project, and the appeal hearing is not limited to the grounds stated for the appeal. The City Council's decision on this matter is the final decision. In conclusion, staff recommends the City Council adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of CEQA guidelines under Class 15 Minor Divisions of Land and Class 3 New Construction or Conversion of Small Structures and Public Resources Code Section 21080.66, and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of Planning Application 2314 and Parcel Map 2023-117 based on findings of fact and subject to conditions of approval. The applicant, the appellant, and staff are available for questions at this time. I believe the applicant and appellant also have presentations they'd like to make. Thank you.
All right. So why don't we hear from the applicant and the appellant before we do our questions? And that way, maybe they'll answer some of our questions. So let's, let's hear from the applicant, and please just say anything to supplement what was said by the staff, and please, you don't, there's no need to repeat it. We heard what the staff, what Caitlin, Ms. Curly said. So you have the floor, and then we'll give the appellant the floor. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Stevens and the City Council. My name is Ali Sejji, and I'm the property owner. And with me is my attorney, Morgan Gallagher, from the law firm of Cox and Castle. In case you have any questions for either of us, we'll both be available. I'll read a little bit about the description of the project. The project is a tremendous improvement to the city of Costa Mesa and its community and the economy. Before I purchased the property, the property was left in a state of despair with significant deferred maintenance. Having lived, worked, and built homes in Costa Mesa, I'm aware of the architectural diversity, people, and character, and believe this project will be harmoniously blended into its environment. The designs of the homes were created by leading architect Mark Gross and Associates. Mark Gross has designed exceptional homes on the east side and was the reason why I chose him on this project. Each home is custom-designed in a coastal modern style. It combines elements of coastal and contemporary aesthetics to create a fresh and relaxed atmosphere. The interiors are well-apportioned for growing families and appropriate to its surroundings and other new construction projects. We worked closely with the city planning department to bring these plans together, and they were approved by the Planning Commission unanimously with very positive comments around the thoughtfulness of the home sizes, open space, and overall design, considering the large size of the lot. We asked for no variances, complied with all the code requirements, exceeded them in many aspects like open space, square footage, yard space. We work with city staff to minimize privacy impacts to neighbors while none of the adjacent neighbors have second-story windows. We still made modifications to both the number of windows, size of the windows, placement of the windows to minimize impacts to adjacent yards. We took the Planning Commission feedback on the use of palm trees and worked with city staff on an updated planting plan. We replaced all the palm trees with another tree variety, positioned them on the southwest side of the property to create additional privacy screens in front of the windows that remain on that side. We provided precise grading and precise landscape plan down to the very individual plants by a licensed PE, professional engineer, who has done several projects in Costa Mesa and was reviewed and approved by the Public Works Department. I'm really excited about this project, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll hear from the appellant, and then we'll take any questions from council of any staff, applicant, or appellant. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Mike Trochkovsky, and I'm a resident at 323rd Street, Costa Mesa. My wife and I, we are here to appeal Planning Commission approval of the project at a given address. The property is bordering our backyard, and our detailed 41-pages-long appeal letter has been filed with the city Costa Mesa Planning Department. The letter includes references, documents, and attachments. Okay, there was not enough timeframe of notice about the project, about the proposed project. For the Costa Mesa, the project drawing were posted on Costa Mesa Planning Department on Friday evening, August 8, and the Planning Commission hearing took place on Monday evening, August 11. Realistically, we had only one business day, only one business day was given by the Department for neighbor, for us, the neighbor, to review the proposed project documents before the Planning Commission hearing. For the Costa Mesa Planning Commission hearing that involves public, involves public notice require notification last at least 10 days before the hearing. And this notification should include information about the project, including plans. The plans were not posted until Friday evening, and the hearing took place on Monday. We, therefore, will respectfully demand that project proposal be sent back to the city of Costa Mesa Planning Department for the proper due process that we are entitled to. The city, in this case, the planning and zoning staff report states at least, in at least three places, that lot is, is level and flat. Slide, please. Could I, could I get a slide? No, first slide. Yeah. To achieve the higher building height, the project applicant proposes to raise the entire lot by one, by number one, by about two and a half feet, and three feet, and number two, building by about three feet. In this, in other words, the applicant proposes to build a hill on, on his flat lot in the middle of surrounding flat lots of the neighbors. The question is why the grade of the entire lot has been significantly raised. The geo-report, the geo-notes, and the drawing don't call for that. The geo-notes don't mention that the project will need approximately 800 cubic yards of imported field, that's about 100 dump trucks of imported soil to build a hill, with geotechnical requirements of three feet to of the minimum depth to be, existing soil to be excavated and recompacted, that at least together at least 1,500 cubic yards or 180 dump trucks of soil to be handled. Again, this was, this, the report, the staff report said this, all flat lots. The building, there's a building code that calls for the floor to be 74, whatever, the 74 feet, but not the surrounding grade, just the floor. So the whole grade was raised to the property lines. Next slide, please. Next slide. Yeah, that's, that's, that's the places in, this is the place in Balboa where they have a flat plain and, and not necessarily grades go all the way to the floor. Next, 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 please. Same here. The state promotes, as far as drainage, the state promotes and requires low-impact development strategies. strategies that include various methods. There was, there was no roof drainage included on the drawing, so we don't know how, how this thing gonna drain and where it's gonna connect. Okay, the, the long driveway is not permeable, so it doesn't absorb the, doesn't absorb water, so it's just, you know, flooding the place. Any excess water can be handled with a sun pump. It appears that other neighbors in the area use sun pumps to handle excess water, so why not on this project? Why to raise the whole grade and, and burden all the neighbors around? There is existing underground stormwater system service, the Santa Ana Avenue. If the system needs improvement, the applicant should help to improve that or, instead of putting all burden on the neighbors to potentially get flooded from the higher grade. It appears there is no other reason to make the proposed building higher about two and a half feet than having better view of the neighbors and, and, you know, influence on their private life. Because of the significant grade change at the property, the retaining walls construction, the neighbors would be exposed, not only neighbors, neighbors being approved without their variance, also the, next slide, please. There was no any type of design, even no presentation, no any detailed information shown in the drawing, how the retaining on the property line will look like. There was a deferral to the landscaping drawing, and this is five-foot-tall retaining wall, which greatly will affect us. But, you know, there was no information. And next slide, please. And yeah, that's, that's about two feet space between the houses and our fence where, with the higher ground, where everything gonna be jumped in and possibly flood our property. This is not detail taken from the drawing, this, this is, this is what's gonna happen if this thing is approved. Drain for the retaining wall gonna be much lower, it's gonna have no outlet, so, because that is below street level. Next, please. Uh, yeah, it's Pascal's principle, where, you know, higher, lower, there's gonna be always, next, please. There's gonna be a problem. Next, please. Next, please. Yeah. Gravel doesn't stop water if there is a retaining wall installed at the property line. Drains will, will, needed to be installed below the, below the top of our lot and potentially flood our lot. Next, please. Next, please. Location orientation of the property line as shown and certified drawing is not legitimate. Next, please. Yeah, there, yeah, this one is fine. Please, back, please. Yeah, our, our fence is shown inside their property, actually, their property inside our property. That's why we're of course concerned. We checked that, we have a similar map, I mean, I think a map that was done by professional land surveyor in 2007, and it's different than this. Then we, I called the state and found out the guy who prepared this map, he is not a licensed surveyor in state of California. So we actually filed a complaint with the state. The number is 2025-424. Person who certified this drawing is not licensed California and licensed, and California says that person is not licensed land surveyor, not, cannot certify property lines. So that's a big problem, this project. The project documents should include about natural mineral investigation, it's not their environmental investigation and report for the existing structural asbestos substructures and utilities, contamination of soil. There was a record of sewer leaking in this property, so there's most likely contamination, and nothing has been done about this. Cross drainage study and report. Vague condition of approval. Windows that the drawing show actually is, show windows, dimensions, and location is not specified. Basically, windows shown and the approved plan is free-floating, free-floating windows. I mean, there's no, I mean, this is planning item, the planning should fix window location and sizes for the neighbors, but it hasn't been done. And the, next, please. Yeah, this, yeah, that's views, study. Next, please. Next, please. Next slide. Yeah, this one, number seven upstairs window, it's a bathroom window, it's a big, a very big window. Number six window, it shows 44 inches minimum height, but doesn't say what's, I mean, maximum height, but doesn't say what the minimum, so basically can run window all the way down to the floor because it's, it's not. Number three window on the side, there is two other windows on the backyard on the same room, so I, we don't understand why the, the applicant needs big window on the side looking, overlooking our backyard. This, this facade, this facade, this side of the house, all these windows are on our backyard side. Next, please. Uh, yeah, the windows should be moved, next, please. Previous, please. Go back. One, oh yeah, thank you. I was told I had, I will have 10 minutes, so I'm just rushing through this. Sorry about that. Yeah, this is, this is the neighbor across the street from us, and there is a house behind him. This, actually, this photo was used by the staff report of comparable property surrounding our area, and the house behind, next, next slide, please. Yeah, the house behind on the one on the left picture has no windows on the side because of the backyard of the neighbor, they, they, you know, they were more, yeah, and the next window on the right. Okay, next, next, please. Trees, there's a lot of trees on the property line, there are all trees, the, there's a retaining, deep retaining wall proposed right at the property line. We don't know what they're gonna do with this. The study, there was no study on trees, you know, most trees will be killed if this, this retaining wall takes place. And so we say condition number four, we say the present subdivision, subdivision map should not be recorded with the county, it was based on topo map and property line surveying done by the person who is not licensed professional land surveyor in the state of California. The building top is not fixed elevation, and that should be done because, you know, it should be, it should be related to NAVD system that, you know, couldn't be changed if the, if the dimensions are from the ground, that could be easily changed. Drawings do not show drainage system for roofs, yeah, that's, next, yeah. Drainage system, there's no any type of system shown on the drawings for the drainage system of the roofs. And, you know, it's important because this roof is about, about four feet from our property line. Okay. In the summary, in our summary, we would like to emphasize and put on record that the project approved by the city of Costa Mesa Planning Commission didn't follow a due process of public notice before the Planning Commission hearing and was, and was not ready for the Planning Commission hearing and approval, as it raises very serious design privacy, security, and safety concerns and exposes us, the neighbors, to potential legal litigations and monetary damages. After approximately two years of the department's plan check, some very important planning, planning-related details of the project are either incomplete or they are totally omitted. The approved surveying drawings that includes property line location orientation has been prepared and PE certified by unlicensed professional. In this case, the planning decision to approve the drawing certified by unlicensed professional exposes us to immediate legal dispute with the developer. The 27-foot height limit was set for the neighbor, from the, it's set for the neighbor's perspective and privacy. We oppose the raising of the grade level on the flat lot to, to subvert the building height limit, basically by, the building height was measured from the great was raised and the height was measured from that grade. And then with the nine-foot ceiling, I mean, nine-foot ceiling heights, we do not have a problem with the proposed house's floor being higher to meet the street gather elevation. However, we categorically oppose rising, rising the natural grade at our property line, thus altering the natural stormwater flow and drainage pattern that will adversely affect our property and cause damage. We respectfully demand that the project be sent back to Planning Commission for completion of the plan check that should address all the above-mentioned, mentioned plan, planning-related design omissions and flaws, and to resolve the professional licensing certification issues. If this hill in the middle of our lots is passed as approved by the Planning Commission, it could have significant negative repercussions down the road. It would establish a dangerous precedent for our neighbors. The 27-foot height limit will lose its meaning. Our Costa Mesa neighborhood will look like a chessboard, chessboard with the black squares representing newly-built hills and white squares representing lower lots, or vice versa. The neighborhood will become like an old-time neighborhood of lords and commoners, with some property owners having tall houses on the hills overlooking neighbors' private backyards. And the lower property owners losing their sunlight, privacy, and getting outside water and possibly even sewer because some pipes will run higher than our yard. And that would be naturally squeezed out from the neighbors, build up hills down the, across to, to, to the yards. Allowing the chessboard-type development unfortunately can lead to disputes between neighbors. Some disputes could even lead to causes of action. Thank you for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, so council, do you have any questions of either the applicant, the staff, or the appellant? Councilmember Gamaros, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. I have several questions. I guess going to start with staff here. So there's an allegation that the plans were not submitted for public review until Friday, the Friday before the Monday that the Planning Commission was, is that correct?
Thank you, Councilmember Gamaros. The Planning Commission packet was released on-
Excuse me. The question was directed to staff. I'm sorry. You got it. Go ahead.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
The Planning Commission packet published on Thursday, August 7th.
The Planning Commission packet was published on Thursday, August 7th, and when was the Planning Commission meeting?
It was on Monday, August 11th. So that met the 72-hour agenda posting regulation.
Okay.
And the packet included the full staff report and the plans as well.
Okay, and then there was also an allegation about, uh, roof drains. Do the homes have roof drains, the new ones?
Thank you for your question, Councilmember. Things like roof drainage, downspouts, et cetera, are generally shown on building plans and evaluated at that time. The plans presented here and to Planning Commission are more conceptual, illustrating the general design of the property. But during the plan check process, all of those issues, drainage, downspouts, will be evaluated to make sure that they comply with code.
And just to add on to that, the, the roof plan shown, generally, these are designed with gutters and downspouts, and they will drain onto the property just right at the side of the house.
Okay. And then another question I have here, it's showing, I'm a little confused, but it's, it looks like it's showing, uh, that there's a raised elevation here. It looks like, uh, we're, we're raising the grade, and there's import fill coming in, is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember.
Okay, why are we having, and I don't know how much, but I heard 800 cubic yards of import fill coming in for this. Why? I'm just curious.
There were, there's drainage concerns on the site right now. It doesn't quite drain to the street properly, so the grade raise was necessary to make the site drain properly to the street.
I can add on to that. The site's currently below the sidewalk, so it can't drain to the street, and the site currently drains in an eastward, that's east, right, in an eastward direction, and the street, Santa Ana Avenue is the western boundary of the site. And so in order for both lots to drain onto the sidewalk, the site actually has to be higher because the sidewalk elevation is over 72 feet above sea level, and currently the site is 71 and change at its highest point. And so it needs to be raised in order for water to drain onto the street where it's required to drain.
So does the 2308 Santa Ana Avenue lot drain properly?
Today, not currently, no.
Okay. Okay, I'm probably gonna have more questions as this moves on, but I'm gonna hold off for now, and anyone else who'd like to ask, please. Thank you. Appreciate your answers there.
I have just a couple of quick questions. When did you first apply to the city of Costa Mesa for this permit? Or whatever, we, the CUP, I guess.
Is the question for me or for the staff? I believe it was 2023.
2023.
I don't recall exactly. I want to say it was 2023.
Okay. So the process to get you from the beginning to get to where you are right now has been approximately two years?
Correct. And honestly, it's been two months just to get here from the Planning Commission. I think it took two months to get on the Planning Commission, Jen, so four months or five months have just been, uh, commissions.
And so, and maybe this is for the lawyer who has experience maybe with other jurisdictions. I mean, how does that length of time compare to your prior experience, time in other jurisdictions? And, you know, there's no wrong answer, I just want the truth-
Yeah.
-so I can help diagnose some issues.
That's a very long time. Usually, a two-year entitlement window would be for a very large project, not two single-family homes and lots. But, and just to clarify, this is a tentative map and design review. There's no CUP, it's completely compliant with the code.
I got it. So, but, and I, I got the, I got the wording wrong, and I knew I would, but thank you for correcting me. But for this process to get to the tentative design review and map, you would have expected it to take how long?
For something like this, six months.
Six months.
It's CEQA exempt, so-
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's taken two years. So it's taken approximately four times as long as you would normally expect-
Right.
-in your experience.
Right.
Okay. And then the other question I have is, the, on, can you go to number six on the staff So is the, oh, okay, we do, we had it, now it's gone. Six. Thank you. So the little green rectangles, that, that's the, that's the driveway, correct? Yeah?
That's correct.
And is it, is the material that's being used or proposed to be used, is that permeable?
That driveway is concrete with, with broken, like, separated by, by this artificial grass in order to create a decorative driveway approach.
Oh, so that, that, the green part is the grass?
Correct.
So, okay, so then it's concrete, which is not permeable.
Correct.
And then the grass is?
Correct. The, the, the partition between them would be permeable.
Okay. What are the, what are the advantages and disadvantages of having a permeable driveway? I mean, it's probably your call, but I'm just curious.
From my perspective, permeable driveways are very difficult to maintain, and most homeowners will not maintain them, and the permeability of the driveway will clog, and hence why you probably very, you seldom see them in residential properties because defectiveness of the permeability decreases over time unless you're able to professionally maintain them.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions. Thank you. Do any other councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, just a quick question for staff. There was a, a discussion about appropriate property lines. Can you confirm that our staff have checked the, that the property lines are accurate?
Thank you, Commissioner Reynolds. At this time, the applicant has submitted-
Councilmember.
Or councilmember. You got me. Councilmember Reynolds. The applicant has submitted a, what we call a topographic survey. The project is conditioned to provide- The project is conditioned to provide property corner certification and boundary marks during the building plan check process. Typically, there's not much deviation between those two surveys. So at this time, we believe that the property lines indicated are accurate. The boundary survey process is more extensive, and it has more cost, and it's one of the reasons it's done after entitlements are provided. The applicant would work with the county and get it recorded. So at this time, we don't have that level of a survey, but the topographic survey is typically pretty accurate.
Got it. Thank you. And in the conditions is the key part, right? So that would be answered. Okay. And then there was a note about the project potentially damaging existing trees. I don't know if that was on the site property or adjacent property. What is the, what are our current rules about, like, a neighbor damaging another neighbor's tree?
I mean, the entitlements that would be provided are limited to the applicant's property. If there is a tree that does, let's say, straddle a property line, that would be something that would have to be worked out, typically sometimes civilly. But it's not something that, I don't know if we've studied completely. The existing planting plan that we have is just really showing what's proposed, and it doesn't show if there's any trees to be damaged. But it's intended to only modify the trees on the subject property.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff, or the applicant, or the appellant? If not, then let's open it up for public comment, so you all could sit down. And there may or may not be anyone else from the public that wishes to talk on this matter. I don't see anybody from the public, from, from the chambers. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment. And there's stuff going on with the, Councilmember Gamaros wanted to remove his motion. You want to remove your-
Again, I wasn't trying to make a motion. I haven't been having touch screen errors, I think, so.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Heard the motion, yes.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to, I guess it's to affirm the Planning Commission's decision to approve this project.
Second.
Okay. I, it's small lot ordinance project. I have one other question. How come this has to even come to the Planning Commission? Why can't, if they're not asking for any variances, why can't it be, why can't it be ruled on administratively?
The project, including the map, right now is required by code to come through to the Planning Commission for review. Their code also indicates that the design of the structures as part of that application be submitted either prior to processing that tentative map. So that's what the code requires at this time.
All right.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I, yes.
If I could just, just a brief add-on here. And I think in some prior meetings, we had talked about an ongoing process to clean up the code and streamline, streamline a lot of these types of approvals. One of the reasons that this, this property needs a discretionary approval to subdivide and build two new homes is that it's not in an R1. R1, if, currently, R1s can do this ministerially. They're purely on a staff level. But this being an R2 could have had to use the small lot subdivision ordinance. And so our plan, one of the things on our top priority is to update the streamlining so that R2 properties can be processed in a similar manner as the R1 property SB9-type process. So I just wanted to add that on as well.
Thank you. I was just going to comment during my comments. First of all, it is always good to see property owners using their rights to create more housing stock for a community. And Isa Costa Mesa has a lot of interesting parcels with multiple housing adjacents. And I think, I'm very thankful to hear you say that, because I was about to ask that of staff. Any chance we have to streamline housing production, we should do so. And I really want us to be, making the goal to be as efficient and effective for housing. It should not take the applicant longer than they're used to to get a housing project that we need in Costa Mesa through. So I really please support this motion, and I'm happy that we're moving forward with more housing.
Yes. Anyway, I was, I wanted to further express myself about the motion. Yeah, to, thank you for answering my question. I do recall that the small lot ordinance was a hot political topic back in the 2017, 2018 timeframe. And there was an amendment to the ordinance that I voted on. I have a PTSD flashback from that. I know we were over at OCC, believe it or not. I don't know if anybody else remembers that, when we voted on it, because we thought there would be so many people there. Or was it the fairgrounds? No, it was OCC, was it fairgrounds? We were at the fairgrounds for some reason, and we voted for it. We weren't in the council chambers. But yeah, so that could be the reason why the code is what it is, because it's a very politically sensitive issue. But that's kind of died down, and now the priorities of the council have, have settled on, as Mayor Protem Chavez said, providing more housing. And I think this is a terrific project. I just wish we would have gotten it through faster, and I know we will in the future. You know, you're winning, so is there something critical for you to say?
Just a clarification, if the motion includes the additional condition that the Planning Commission imposed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, it does. It's just approving what, affirming what they did.
Okay. Thank you.
I was, the only thing I was going to mention is, it'd be, it'd be good to just approve these plans as they are, so we can move forward and be clear about the conditions.
Well, the only condition they added was to get rid of the palm trees, right? I mean, that's no big deal, right? What did they do? They add anything else?
It was, there was two, there was two I saw. And we addressed them both.
The commission also reiterated the requirement that a view study be required during the building plan check process. And so, in an effort to try to maybe eliminate that component of the condition, the applicant has submitted the revised landscaping plan to provide additional landscaping.
Okay.
To provide that privacy, so that that study won't be required down the road.
Okay. And, and, and so, what does staff think about that? You think it's a good idea to eliminate that?
When we evaluated the revised landscaping plan, the applicant does appear to comply with the additional required landscaping as, as recommended by the Planning Commission. And it would be beneficial to make a determination of if that's sufficient to reduce the privacy impacts or not. Otherwise, if during building plan check, there's additional remedies, we maybe should be requiring them at this time.
I'm not understanding that.
So if there, if the landscaping is sufficient, then we shouldn't have to do additional view studies to determine if there's privacy impacts.
Okay. So you think we should get rid of the view study?
I think it could be a recommendation, yes.
Yes, correct? Okay, I will include that in my motion.
Second concurs.
Second concurs. No view study. Let's get rid of the palm trees.
Correct.
I know some of the councilmembers feel strongly about palm trees. And palm, people don't like palm trees. And palm trees, you know, I don't mind palm trees, but they can be, as we saw in the fires, they can be flammable and dangerous, so you could use another tree. But we'll get rid of the view study. That's good. If there's no other comments that anybody has, we, okay, Councilmember Gamaros.
I have, I just-
Can I have one more comment?
No.
He was allowed, I wouldn't have him.
I know, but you can, we-
If you want to give him a comment.
Comment?
What, what could you pile, pile?
The whole project was based on the survey that is by the not-licensed-
Okay, you said that already. We heard you. Go.
Okay. So I just want to make some comments here on everything that I've heard. I don't think it's fair that an applicant, a developer, has to wait two years or invests two years of their time, not in that of itself, but in proportion to the fact that 72 hours is only given because that's the letter of the law. There's a letter of the law, and there's a spirit of the law. And I'm not going to call foul play, but if it takes two years to get to the Planning Commission, and 72 hours later, there's a decision made, I think that's extremely impactful on the surrounding neighbors, and I don't think it's fair. So for that reason, I'm not going to support this.
Okay. Fair enough. Let's call for the question.
Motion carries 5-1 with Councilmember Gamaros voting no.
Thank you. Congratulations, and we're moving on to the next item, which is Old Business, item number one.
Thank you. This is the Clean Mobility Options Voucher Pilot Program for Community-Based Transit. This is Amendment One, a presentation by Mr. Seth Raman, Public Works Director.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, our transportation services manager, Paul Martin, and our transportation coordinator, Brett Tensio Thomas, are getting ready to set up the presentation. Brett Tensio will make the presentation, and will be happy to answer any questions after that.
Okay. Gentlemen, whenever you're ready, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Honorable Counsel. I bring, we bring before you, I'm joined, my name's Brett Tensio Thomas. I'm the city's active transportation coordinator, and I'm joined by Paul Martin, our city's transportation services manager. Today, we bring before you the Clean Mobility Options Voucher Pilot Program for Community-Based Transit Amendment One. Some quick background on the project. The Clean Mobility Options Program is a statewide initiative that provides funding for on-demand electric vehicle transit services to underserved communities. And the goals of this program are to increase clean mobility options for low-income and disadvantaged communities, provide community-driven mobility solutions, improve access to safe, reliable, convenient, and affordable community mobility, and reduce greenhouse gas emissions. The city staff submitted a successful grant application to the CMO program in August of 2023, and we were awarded an initial grant of $500,000 per year for a total of $1.5 million with no, and I should point out this had no required local match. In June of 2024, the city council awarded a contract services agreement to Circuit Transit, Inc., to operate the on-demand rideshare service. And we began operation of the service in October 2024, which provided on-demand, point-to-point rideshare service in the areas of College Park and the West Side, south of Joann Street, connecting that area to the area surrounding the East Side Commercial District along 17th Since the launch of the program in October of 2024, we've seen a steady increase in ridership until the month of August, our last recorded month, of 2,800 rides per month. In February of 2025, city staff successfully secured an additional grant of $300,000 to increase the program funding from $1.5 million to $1.8 million. This additional funding will expand the service area and add a fourth electric vehicle to the service. In addition, the expansion of the service is pending the approval of Amendment One with Circuit Transit, Inc. Additionally, the service, the staff is proposing to update the service hours. The current service hours are Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00, to 8:00 p.m. And we are proposing to extend the Monday through Friday service hours from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and maintain those Saturday and Sunday hours from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The service area, as mentioned, is currently south of Joann Street, in the College Park and West Side areas to Federal Avenue, south of West 19th Street. It goes to the western city limits to West 16th Street. And this connects again to the East 17th Street Commercial District, bounded by East 18th Street in the north and East 16th Street in the south. The proposed service area expansion would add the addition of the Hoag Hospital Complex, as well as the east side of Newport Boulevard, south of Santa Isabella Avenue, between Eldon Avenue, Fulton Avenue, and Newport Boulevard. The CMO pilot project for on-demand transit services is included in the fiscal year 2025-26 CIP budget in the amount of $500,000. Staff is requesting to increase this appropriation to $650,000 for the approved expansion of the service. And funding for the proposed Amendment One with Circuit Transit, Inc., is provided for the grant by the grant for two years. And as previously mentioned, there is no local city match. The CMO pilot program does require a city commitment, however, of city staff time, including social media advertising and administration, as well as electricity for four EV chargers and dedicated parking spaces at the corporate yard. Staff recommends that this evening that city council approve Amendment One to the Contractor Services Agreement with Circuit Transit, Inc., for the Clean Mobility Options Voucher Pilot Program in an amount not to exceed $650,000 annually for a term of two years. That city council authorize an increase of appropriation of the Clean Mobility On-Demand Transit Services from $500,000 to $650,000 for the FY 2025-26 budget. And that city council authorize the city manager and the city clerk to execute the agreement and future amendments to the agreement. With that, I conclude my presentation, and we are available for questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excellent presentation. Any questions? Councilmember Beulie?
Just a couple. I know it's a popular program, and it seems to be getting a lot of usage, but I'm just curious, in 2026, whether the grant program runs out? Have we heard any indication from Sacramento or any other source as to what their intentions are, or what our plan would be if the funding stops?
Good evening, Councilmember Beulie. Again, I'm Paul Martin, the Transportation Services Manager. We kind of expected you guys would ask. It's kind of the, it's the hot topic, right? We were able to, the city was able to secure a grant for three years. So what happens after that? Our team is actually working on a more comprehensive memo, providing more details about the ridership and evaluating how the service is going, that we'll provide to city council. And with that, always thinking about funding opportunities going forward. We haven't necessarily seen another funding source immediately, but we've got a couple years to really nurture that and look for those opportunities, whether that's with the state, or with OCTA more locally, or if there's some other mechanism for some funding sources.
I would imagine maybe with our finance department or whatnot, we guys do some sort of analysis and look at a whole bunch of scenarios. But one scenario is, what's it cost to maintain this, and what would be a reasonable fee for service? I mean, right now, it's a gratis voucher program, but who knows? We own the vehicles. My sense is, a lot of these EVs are pretty low to no maintenance for a certain period of time, depending on what their useful life is. And you guys crunch the numbers and see what's the low, low amount to still provide the service, especially if it's extremely popular, at a below-market fee. So I'm sure that's part of the memo and the things you guys will be working on.
And that's kind of the beauty of the pilot, right? We're getting that opportunity for three years to really see, with X dollars, what do we get with these certain amount of hours, with this many vehicles, and a certain geography? So then we'll know exactly what those costs are through the coordination with this vendor that we have running the system.
Okay. I'm going to support this. I was just curious. Well, I've got you guys here. I thought I'd ask you.
Yeah, agreed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If you can just clarify, the funding is there till October of 2027. Just want to clarify that.
Excellent. Any other, before we open it up to the public, any other questions? Okay, let's open it up to public comment.
I guess I'll go, I guess I'll go first.
Yes.
Quick question. I didn't even know that this program existed in Costa Mesa, but I was wondering, isn't there any other cities that have already done certain programs like that, that we can study off of them, instead of us spending $1.8 million? I mean, I got a lot of relatives that live in LA, and they all have scooters, and they, you know, you just pick them up and you do whatever. So demographically, who's using the service? Is it young people? Is it adults? Is it people with handicap? Is it, you know, the Orange County Transportation Authority already operates buses for people that are injured, or, you know, they need handicap wheelchair services and so forth? So aren't we kind of doubling this thing up? Why are we studying something that somebody else might have already looked at, instead of saying, hey, look, that worked for these guys, why don't we implement this and do this? And then you guys are buying the batteries on these cars. Those things go out, then the car is useless, because you got to change the batteries on them. Granted, it's not going to happen in three years, but they do diminish. So my comment is, why set up another committee to study something that somebody else probably already done? And if it's not here locally, I'm sure the Japanese have already thought about it. Tokyo is very, very crowded, and they figure that stuff out. So we can look at other things and bring it here, instead of trying to create our own studies- own study session. My two cents worth. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just speaking on behalf of myself. Yeah, this is a fantastic program. I have used it already enough times to where a driver now recognizes me when I use the program, so I'm very happy about this service, and I'm happy to see it expand over to the East Side. I'm sure anyone, any East Side regulars would appreciate not having to cross over the 55 in order to use this service, and I think it's fantastic to expand it to include Hoag Hospital, so that anyone can get to their necessary medical appointments. So, this looks like a great service, and I also think that any data points that we can collect from this, any anonymized point-to-point data, see where the travel demand is going to and from, and then, if we continue with a microtransit service, if after the three-year grant period is over, we decide we'd like to go for more of a, like a consistent route, a, like, a fixed route service, we'll have that data that is specific to Costa Mesa, and not something that is from, like Huntington Beach's circuit system, or something like that, which they do have. So, I think this is a great program, and I'm excited to see it expand. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Closed public comment, and I'm going to make the motion to approve the staff recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Reynolds. I'm really, I remember when we opened this, and I'm really happy that we've had 11,000 riders, and that it's increasing in ridership. Do we have data about, and I'm sorry if it's in the staff report and I forget it, I'm sorry about that, do we have data about the demographics of the users?
Again, that's one of the items that we plan to go into a deeper dive in the memo. We do have some data about the age demographic, and some of the destinations in particular, so we did want to really evaluate that in discussion with the operator.
Okay. And obviously, because of the use, that we are filling some gaps from OC Access, provided by OCTA, and things like that, so that's terrific, but...
Agreed.
Do we, is it going to be in the memo, I should say? Why are we, why are there gaps, and how is it that we're, we're filling those gaps?
Yeah, definitely. What we didn't have here tonight, which could be supplemented in the memo, is a discussion, again, about the OCTA buses, the OC bus routes that go through the city, and where they do and don't serve the city, and how this microtransit is run by the city. We are in control over what the geography is, and what the community it serves, what those destinations are. So, we have much more say over how that management occurs, and it's less of a line that a typical bus route has, that's fixed. In this case, more of a footprint, a geography of the community. So, we cover a greater area of the community that can be served by all the microtransit. So, there are definitely pros and cons associated with this type of transit versus the more traditional buses run by OCTA.
Right. Or even the OC Access, the, you know, the, for disabled folks and old folks.
Right. Because our microtransit is serving all the community, so it's broad, and not only anyone with mobility access issues.
Right, right.
So, greater audience.
Yeah. Anyway, congratulations. I mean, I think it's a great implementation. Councilmember Reynolds, did you have anything to say? You're the second to the motion.
Yes, a very enthusiastic second. Very, very proud of this program, and it's great to see the growing usership and the variety in the usership. A little bit of history, I know there's been some talks about, you know, where different grants come from. This is one that several years ago, our team was very intentional about pursuing, because feedback, especially from the West Side community, was serious mobility challenges. I don't have the data right in front of me, but I recall some census-based statistics on Costa Mesa, these neighborhoods in particular being some of the highest proportion of residents that don't have access to a car, and that spans multiple ages. But another broader context is the aging of Orange County, right? And so, a lot of this covers my district, where I would get feedback from a lot of our senior community members, who said they didn't go to the senior center because they didn't have access to, they didn't have vehicle access, or it was hard to get there. They didn't go to certain events, they didn't get to parks, they couldn't get to Hoag Hospital because they didn't have this support. And so, knowing that, one, we're able to create these connections, is a really incredible service that we can provide, and being able to do it completely free to the city for three years is pretty fantastic. My primary question you already touched on, which was, really wanted to make sure we're ahead of the ball for when the existing grant money is gone. I know you guys are playing with a lot of different strategies there, and can look at other areas for those strategies. I love the idea of a fixed route ride. When I was in college, our college provided, they called it Safe Ride, it was like a fixed route, so you knew every 10 minutes, you know, in certain locations, a shuttle was going to come up that you could get on, if that makes sense, you know, it's worth looking into. I've mentioned this before with some of the other OCTA-funded transportation services that we provide, really making sure that we're looking at whether it makes sense to coordinate or combine those services that we run through the senior center. Let's make sure we're looking at that data together. The Japanese have a really good strategy, subways, light rail, fast trains, walkable cities, we'll get there, but I think this is a really good incremental step. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor Stevens, and thank you, Mayor Reynolds, for your, your good comments on this. I know you were very interested in bringing this program to Costa Mesa, and it does encompass the entirety of my district. A few things I want to point out is, when we look at the ridership of this program, 45% of the folks using this program are 16 to 22 years old. So, what that tells me is that we're helping young people in our community perhaps get to the grocery store. Don't worry, they're biking too, on e-bikes, kind of dangerous, but the point I'm trying to make is, this is clearly shown to be something that's good for the youth, and we have a lot of kids in West Coast Mesa that go to school near Upper Harbor, a lot of kids that go to school at Sancia, and they may get across town. This is very, very productive. I think it's a good use of, of grant funding, because it's not our own money, it's someone else's money we're using for this program. So, I look forward to seeing us continue to develop it, and yeah, let's be proactive, look in the future and see what we need to do to maintain this with or without grant funding. Ideally, the hope would be that we have grant funding for this, but if we really feel like it's fitting in our community, I think we should explore that option. So, with that being said, this is a good motion, and I'm happy to support it.
Okay. In that case, let's call for the question.
Councilmember Beulie, please. Motion carries 6-0.
All right. Now, we have one more item, old business item number two. Before we adjourn back to our closed session, can you read the title, please?
Yes. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Costa Mesa, California, amending chapters 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, and 11 of Title 13, Planning, Zoning, and Development of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code, planning, zoning, and development to provide technical updates and clarifications. Code Amendment PCTY-2025-0001, presentation by Ms. Curly, Assistant Planner.
Now, Ms. Curly, this was approved, as my recollection, it was approved last time unanimously. So, how many syllables do you need for your presentation? If any?
Mayor, staff is available for any questions.
There you go. Beautiful, rock and roll. That's the best presentation you've ever made. Caitlin Curly for the win. All right. Let's open it up, unless there's no questions, let's open it up to public comment. Anybody, oh, really, Mark? Yes, please. Please, how many syllables do you need? Take your time, Mark.
Everyone ready? Good evening, Council. My name is Mark Fuchsovich, and I want to tell the story of two businesses in Costa Mesa and one government regulation. There we go. This is Ally Garvin, the owner of Neat Coffee in Costa Mesa. Neat Coffee actually just celebrated its 10-year anniversary, I think yesterday or the day before. Neat Coffee, if you haven't been, is... How's the clicker going to work? I'm trying every button. I'm just going to say next slide, is that, or you want to? Neat Coffee is in West Side Costa Mesa, and is a wonderful institution, a coffee shop, a community center, started from, I think, an old car repair shop, or something like that. It serves as an amazing community space, and Neat Coffee almost didn't exist. Neat Coffee almost didn't exist because of our parking minimum requirements. Neat Coffee only existed because we, because they were not going to meet Costa Mesa's parking minimum requirement, unless they put in a bike rack, which could count for one spot of their parking minimum requirement. This is Boil and Bake. Boil and Bake is Costa Mesa's newest and greatest bagel shop, owned by Chef Carlos and Chef Luke. Chef Carlos, if you don't know, is the son of the owner of Shirley's Bagels, and has been in the bagel family a long, long time. They make amazing, delicious bagels. I'm going to go there in the morning. They have been recognized as one of the best restaurants in Costa Mesa, listed number one on Eaters Eating Through Costa Mesa. They're recognized across California, really, and Southern California, for the best bagels, and they just had their two-year anniversary. This is their door, their front door on the right, 114 right there. On the left of them, 112, they're expanding, just next door to them, and it says, big things are coming, because they're expanding their business. But they've been told by the City of Costa Mesa that at the shot, that that expansion, that they cannot have four bar stools, because they don't meet the minimum parking requirement for their property, and they want those four bar stools, their landlord wants their four bar stools, but our minimum parking requirement says, no, the government knows better than the small business owner. This is incredibly frustrating to me. It's incredibly frustrating to me how many businesses never even saw the light of day in Costa Mesa, because they couldn't make their government arbitrary parking requirement standard, they could never see the light of day. And so, parking requirements and zoning ordinance should create unoccupied spaces. That's, that's sort of something I agree with. Parking does, does in fact induce traffic and driving, it's not something we should be mandating, it's something we should let to small businesses decide, and I'm not going to go into this, I don't have time. But ultimately, I don't think the government knows how much parking emortuary needs, how much a housing development needs, how much a flower shop needs, how much a call center needs, and, or an accountant's office needs. The small business may not know either, but the government certainly doesn't, and I think we should get rid of these arbitrary requirements. Thank you.
Spoken by a man who's agitated. Yes. Okay. So, let's, is there anybody on Zoom? Oh, sorry, David, I'm sorry, I missed you over there. You have the floor. Let's turn that mic back on.
Thank you, I switched sides on you. Yeah, so, speaking only as myself, I have to be a little careful here, because this might come back to planning commission. We, we did do a study session on a whole bunch of different updates to our zoning code that could make businesses be able to open a lot faster and a lot easier, and my number one thing that we should address is the parking requirements. And before you tonight, and the reason why Mark and I are both talking about this tonight, is because you have the commercial parking requirement section before you right now, under second reading. There are some minor updates in there, but honestly, the best thing that you could do to address Boil and Bake's concerns, to prevent something like what happened to Neat Coffee from happening in the future, is just remove that entire section. That entire section of commercial parking requirements, honestly, not really needed. I've seen graphs from the suggested parking minimum requirements from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, and some of those data points that they use are completely lopsided. Some of them only have two data points that they use, some of them have reverse, the bigger businesses, the less parking it actually needs. So, these things are all over the place, and I think if you study the literature of parking minimums, and there's a very thick book on parking requirements by Donald Shoup that you can read if you want, but it essentially says, parking requirements are just kind of made up, they're just arbitrarily imposed, and this is one clear, concrete thing that's before you right now. If you wanted to, you could do it tonight, reintroduce as a first reading, but it, it's something that we desperately need to fix, because there are so many businesses, so many places that have been affected by these requirements, and they, they just don't make sense. One of my favorites that I've, that I've seen is our minimum parking requirements on places that serve alcohol. It's like, why, why are we forcing people to have open parking spaces to a place where you're going to go and drink, and then, what, you're going to drive home impaired afterwards? So, this is my number one issue that I want to see addressed in a future zoning code update, and I hope that the city council agrees. Thank you.
Yes, Iggy.
Well, let's just say I'm really glad I stayed for the last one. So, when it comes to parking, parking is a driver. If you don't have sufficient parking, as stated, and one number does not apply to everything, but I'll tell you what, we're having major issues, and what is before you right now, if it gets changed, then what happens to all the businesses that have gone through and applied, and either got denied, or are currently operating without sufficient? The Mercado Market at the Home Depot parking lot, go out there on a Saturday morning, there's no parking. You have to park at the Home Depot section and walk all the way across if you want to go to the market, and if you want to go to the Wells Fargo Bank, well, you might as well park maybe by Starbucks or something down the street, because there is no parking. Even the older employees park in the back of the store now, there's still insufficient parking. They just opened a Salty Horse behind the Rexall Center right there on Cecil. They're doing phenomenal. They don't have any parking. They don't have any handicap parking. The other day, I was driving down the street, there was a girl in a wheelchair trying to get to the restaurant. Where are they supposed to park? Now, the fact that they don't have sufficient parking, they're parking up and down a residential street, they're parking up and down on Eldon, they're parking down on Cecil, there is no parking, yet they're operating a phenomenal business out of a location that doesn't even meet the criteria. So, do you go back and revert all these existing businesses and say, well, guess what? You don't need any parking now? Just do whatever you want to do? Or is it going to be like LA, that we're going to start having meters on every street, and the cities collect revenue, because now you're parking on city streets, because you can't park anywhere else? And now you're doing the housing program where you can build an ADU, but you don't have to supply any parking for the ADU, so where are they going to park? They can't park on the grass, they don't have a garage, and everybody that does have a garage has stuff for the kids to store in the garage, their electric bikes, their canoes, their exercise room, their whatever. So now, everybody gets dumped onto the city street, and now, the city maintains a city street with red curbs. So now, there's even less parking in higher-density areas. So, you have to have parking. It's mandatory to have parking. And for eliminating so much, I mean, it doesn't have to be one number fits all. Everyone should stand on its own merit. I'm a general contractor. If that project doesn't meet the criteria, and I can't make my profit margin, that's not a good project for me. I walk away from it, I go to the next project. So, every restaurant or parking situation should stand on its own ground. I mean, I don't think four bar stools really makes a difference, but that's my personal opinion, but you have to have sufficient parking.
All right. Thank you. Anybody on Zoom?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Closed public comment. I'm going to make a motion to approve the, the item for second reading. However, I do think this is an interesting conversation, and I think that we should consider having a study session next year about this, this concept of commercial parking minimums, but for now, I think we should...
I have a quick question.
Vote for this. Yes, of course. Hold on one second, because I made my motion, you could speak in a second. I made the motion. It's seconded by Councilmember Chavez. We're going to give him a shot to say anything, but I do think that we should just for now get through the holidays, you know? Hope that we can find a parking space and get through this meeting. Okay. Do you have anything to say, Mayor Protem?
None.
You have something super important to say? Go.
I do, just because you guys just confused the heck out of me and I just want some clarification. And it kind of pivots on the conversation I had with Ms. Thai. The one project I was talking about, seems like one of the hangups was a parking issue. But I just want to make sure I followed this exchange correctly. What's being contemplated in tonight's second reading, it wouldn't be, it would be to remove mandatory minimum numbers, but not to remove mandatory parking. And I liked the comment that was made. It seems to me the appropriate path forward when we get there would be on a case-by-case basis, the applicant justify a reasonable parking number that everybody agrees to. But what was being contemplated? Just remove all parking requirements? Because that seems absurd to me.
Thank you, Councilmember Beulah. As part of tonight's agenda item for the second reading, there is no proposal to remove any parking minimums. The only aspect of the second reading that remotely touches parking is the adoption of updated, shared parking data for hour-by-hour usage that allows staff to calculate how a shopping center with many tenants, how users of that shopping center occupy parking throughout the course of a day so that they can share parking over the course of the day and in total not have each tenant park individually. And the net result is actually that fewer parking spaces will be required when a whole shopping center is taken into account. But that is the only aspect of parking that's affected with the zoning ordinance change. Any discussion about parking ratios or parking minimums would return at a future time.
And I'll just end on this. Now, I'm appreciative of this discussion and to pivot on what we spoke previously, maybe a week or so ago, that this is all part of the process of cleaning up our zoning and code so we can tackle this problem of delay and frustration and making it difficult for people to pull permits and do business in the city. So I'll support the motion, but I just wanted that clarification. Thank you.
Before our list goes, I just want to say shout out to the designated drivers because I actually drive and park while my wife drinks wine at the bar. I'm just saying, you know? So anyway.
Good point. Councilmember Reynolds.
Yeah, I'll be supporting the motion. I just wanted to add, I have a strong interest in as well, and I like the idea of a study session on the topic. It is the highest pain point that I hear from especially our small businesses who are trying to open. The very thick book that Commissioner Martinez mentioned in his personal capacity is called The High Cost of Free Parking and it's really eye-opening about the lost opportunities with certain parking requirements, not just what businesses don't open, but how we're using land in our city. So I think it's a really important topic and the benefits that come from addressing this issue are very aligned with, I think, resident interest on diverse, dynamic, interesting, locally-owned businesses that really face major barriers due to our parking requirements.
And one last thing before I call for the question. I do remember having, sitting in a very interesting breakout session at the mayor's conference in DC where Annapo, wait, was it Annapolis? Anyway, I think it was one of the cities back east did a private, public-private partnership to develop parking, you know, where people pay on public or private land and we worked with it. We have, in the City of Costa Mesa, to my knowledge, no place, public parking where people pay, right? And there's a lot of, Huntington Beach has that, Santa Ana has that. It's quite good. And I think that, you know, as Councilmember Reynolds said, the title of the books is The High Cost of Free Parking. And so we can maybe work together as part of our discussion on opportunities for a public-private partnership to create parking to alleviate some of the pressure on our businesses and also address the need for parking, which I think we all know exists, but we kind of leave, throw our local businesses to the wolves and have them shoulder the entire burden of that without stepping up as the public sector, as many of our local neighboring communities do. All right? Let's call for the question.
Councilmember Beulah, please. Motion carries 6-0.
Okay. At the request of Council, oh, sorry, Mayor Protem Chavez, we're going to adjourn in memory and in honor of Jaeger Boys who died tragically in an e-bike accident and may rest in peace and may we commit ourselves to safe e-bike ridership and take care of those folks on e-bikes.